This will continue for June 5th. There's no further notice to carry on tonight. I just want to check here, nine people. Are they all eligible? Someone was eligible.
So we have concluded our presentation, as you recall, Mr. Chairman, the last presentation. We wanted some traffic testimony from your side. Mr. Norman, correct me if I'm wrong, but we closed our case.
That's why I don't... You had no further notice. We had no further...
Best crap.
Mr. Patford, this year, retained by the township. The traffic study, I believe, that's the plan is to move Patford to testify tonight without his traffic. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right. That being the case, since we're out of our usual situation, instead of... Adam. We're going to test whether we're reportable. Is your whole number piece you got?
I did.
So your full name and due addresses?
My full name's Adam Patford. My business address is in Alton, Atlantic Drive, Street 300 West, now in Jersey.
How old are you, Patford? And your P D, right?
I'm a registered professional engineer in New Jersey and lots of other states and a professional traffic operations engineer.
This is your primary field of expertise is traffic, yeah?
Yes, I've been doing it for 12 years.
That means definitely, unless we should call it caper or anything like that.
Thank you, Doc.
We'll show what you have to watch. We have a corporate word. So let's try to follow more than I, not all enough. We've told most of us others. Second. You have the stuff that you're going to show, um, can we have our copy? Can we take a record of this somehow with them? Just in the case that the property field has a court issue or management say, here's a lot of things. So if you, I don't know, if you do all of this, and I know at some point there's some issue, something about maybe towards moving in this relation.
We, I don't have our copy, but we have our copy. We have digital copies.
Comrades, that we...
My experience is if it goes to court, court must, there's still, they want to see data. I mean, it's easiest way to do it. But, so, I guess in some way, shape or form, is this one worth it? This, which is going to be part more. This is something that we... So we're actually going to record of it, is that our contract? That is not what we're doing.
I don't, you know, would that be a testicle?
I mean, I think for now, I don't think that's...
I don't think so.
At a minimum, yeah. Something with that, and I agree with you.
And there are things on here that become more motion, video. As R2. Of course, I've got caught up to that guy, picked out.
Well, you have to leave a copy. We have all the slides.
So somehow, we're going to make, we're going to call this. We have to give his name, and we're going to make data copy. So, we're going to call it. I mean, we're not going to, we're not going to do slide by slide, screen by screen, right? I mean, we have to, we have to study, so this is, this is supplementing a lead span.
All right, I think, I think this a little bit in my career, but I think what he has to do, I was just getting into a verbal, oral description of what he's showing. Not in terms of the visual photographs, of the number of slides he's showing, that they be finished and prepared, the title on the title screen, that type of stuff, so that we can at least match it up with the digital copy that we have on the company, like a little bit of change in that thing.
Yeah, that's right. We have to describe what we're looking at. Let's just go over every one. So, see, the, the title on there is the same as a, as our... So let's, I'll try to order it out in any way that's everyone including me. Show what you have in mind. The lane's always staying, and we should, we should say, listen to what it was. So let's call this, I'm not naming, it's not mine. It's gonna be named.
All right, I'll call the Village 35 Independent Tracker for being a corridor study. How was my presentation? It's dated July 10th, 2019. It's total, coming to slides. Good evening, everybody. Uh, my name's Adam Patford, and I'm a traffic engineer with StanTech. We were retained by Milltown Township to take a look at and evaluate the traffic impact study and propose improvements for Village 35. And subsequent, subsequent to that, to look at the 35 corridor as a whole and evaluate the existing condition, the existing issues that are out there today, as well as future issues, or future conditions, I'll call it, future conditions that would arise with background growth rate with Village 35, as well as other development that's happening in the township. So that, that's kind of what differentiates our analysis between what was prepared by the developer's traffic engineer and Hudson's. Ours takes into account additional background growth and additional site developments that kind of came on into the picture after the Langin study was prepared. I'm going to try to enable these best I can. So our study, we wanted to answer four questions. I'll try to stand still. No, I like to move.
If you may, when you go to the next slide, say, we're now talking about slide two.
Okay. So we're talking about slide two, study purpose. We wanted to answer four questions. First question was, is the data, methodologies, and findings applied in the Langin TIS appropriate, applicable, and conducted utilizing typical traffic engineering principles? Second question we wanted to answer is, do the proposed roadway improvements mitigate the site impacts? Are there any additional needs? Third question is, does the internal access and circulation promote safe and efficient circulation for all users? So essentially evaluating internal circulation. And then finally, as it relates to the corridor study component of the OPRAS to do, are there any other critical corridor traffic issues that now could be addressed through the provisions and what's available to us through the redevelopment plan? Methodology, so for the independent review, we looked at the Langin TIS and the updates. They also provide us with their traffic analysis files, so we are linked to that on YouTube. And this is slide three, methodology. Looked at the study, looked at the traffic analysis models that were used by the developer's traffic engineer Langin to evaluate the condition and come up with their recommendations, and also looked at the trip generation distribution. For the corridor study, we verified traffic volumes along the corridor, conducted our own travel time and delay runs. Essentially, we're looking at what the existing traffic conditions are on the roadway, getting our own measurements, developed a sim-traffic model that informed our study and the future condition, and identified many additional needs. And then finally, pretty straightforward, we evaluated the site and determined access and circulation. This is for Village 35. Next slide is terminology, slide four. The no-bill condition. If you hear me say no-bill condition, I'm talking about future traffic growth without Village 35. If you hear me say future condition, I'm talking about future traffic growth, including Village 35, other planned developments on the corridor, and the developer-proposed roadway improvements associated with Village 35. So talking about the slide five, independent review findings, so talking about the traffic study itself that was prepared by Langin. We generally found it, that was conducted within reasonable traffic engineering practices. It was accepted by NJDOT. Their trip generation analysis was conservative, is conservative because they use higher retail square footage. They also did not take credits for internal trip capture or the existing site retail uses. So even though we do have a maintenance component, which typically can generate more than a typical grocery store, still feel that the trip generation analysis that was conducted by Langin is appropriate for the project. The internal site circulation plan provides for appropriate separation of vehicle circulation, parking, and pedestrians. Generally, we agree with their internal site circulation plan. And the proposed improvements that are currently proposed by the Village 35 team address the site needs as well as helping to address some of the existing site issues that exist, or some existing traffic issues that exist at the Twinbrooks Avenue-John Campbell intersection. Uh, slide six. Independent review findings. Our comments, we had several comments, and I'm only going to focus on the two of substance. As we've heard, some members from the public about last time, we also brought up this in a review letter, that there's only one point of access for vehicles coming from Southbound on 35, which is, will accommodate 38% of the retail trips coming into the site, and 49% of the residential trips will be coming from Southbound on 35. They have one main access point, which is the Twinbrooks intersection. And then the second comment was, just given the inherent uncertainty in trip generation estimates, we're recommending a post-development study that would be conducted by the developer to determine if there's any additional modifications to signal timing and phasing at the intersections that they're improving to optimize intersection operation, essentially. And this is, you know, typically in my experience, the methodologies we use to estimate trip generation usually are a little bit higher than reality, but I think it's still valuable to go back and see if there's any further line improvements we can make to do timing, to make sure that everything's working, once we see how people are really getting to the site, how much, so. That is correct. You're done with geometry improvements. But I would say that especially at Twinbrooks Avenue, I don't see, given the constraints of that intersection, they're kind of already maxing out the improvement potential of that intersection anyway, so we'd be just looking at signal timing improvements at that intersection. We're basically not able to force any additional roadway geometry improvements. Slide seven. So moving on to the corridor study, there's a three-step process. We built a calibrated existing conditions traffic model. And what that allows us to do is really identify the existing issues, but mainly it's the calibrated models used to project, we put the future traffic conditions on the calibrated model and see what happens, to help us identify those future conditions. In order to build the existing conditions model, we did spot counts, which showed that the volumes are generally consistent with the Langin study. As you heard Mr. Maney testify too, that traffic really doesn't, has not been increasing in the current corridor. And I think we've seen that the counts are the same, or in fact, the counts that Langin had used in their study were higher than the current counts. And so we ended up using the Langin study counts because they were higher. Travel time runs, a few observations were conducted. Essentially, we drive the corridor during peak hours of PM on the Saturday. We record how long it takes us to get between intersections, if there's any substantial delay, if you have to sit through a signaling at once. And then, but we did a few observations, essentially, to look at how queuing appears to be functioning on both 35 as well as intersecting roadways. And with that, we identified the existing needs. Step two was to develop future volumes. We took the trip generation from Village 35. Other planned proposed developments we added in that are identified by Milltown Township, and we also added in a conservative background growth rate to account for developments that we may not know about at the moment, but could be in the pipeline. And then finally, we evaluated the future condition, identified any additional future needs, and then used that to evaluate our potential mitigation measures. Uh, eight, uh, slide eight shows the corridor study area. We looked at Route 35 between Harmon Road and Chapel Hill Road, as well as King's Highway between Red Hill Road and Sleepy Hollow Road. Before I explain what's on this slide, this is slide nine, existing conditions. When we got into the, to the study, we identified the PM peak hour as the critical peak hour to analyze, meaning has the most observed and measured traffic volumes and queuing conditions. But we did, we did do Saturday counts, we did Saturday travel time runs, the congestion was less than, and we didn't observe any queuing on the, on the jug handles. So when I talk about traffic conditions from here on out, I'm only going to talk about PM. We're going to focus on PM and addressing those issues. That's the critical peak hour. If we can make PM work, we can, everything else will work. So in the existing conditions, we looked at the Route 35. We see that in general, the corridor operates around, on average, 40 miles per hour, sometimes slower in sections, sometimes faster. Two critical areas that we identified as existing issues was the Route 35, both directions, between King's Highway, Temple Road, and Twinbrooks Avenue, mainly due to queue, uh, jug handle queue spillback, meaning traffic on the jug handles was spilling back onto Route 35, blocking the right traveling of those railways. And also, we identified the intersection of Chapel Hill and Oak Hill Road as a problem area. So those are the two areas we identified. When we add the future volumes in, we see the colors are not showing up quite as well on the screen. So we're showing that, basically what we're showing here is that with, with the background developments, other, other nearby developments, Village 35 background traffic, when we, when we add that all together, we're going to see, we anticipate a core reduction in corridor speed of about eight miles per hour. And the queue spillback obviously continues, especially on, on Temple Road, although Twinbrooks Avenue is being, I would say, slightly addressed through the proposed developer improvements or addressing the existing queue spillback issues there at, at Twinbrooks Avenue. Corridor study focus area is going to be, slide 11, oh, sorry, is that? Slide 11 shows corridor study focus area. Even though we identified the Chapel Hill-Oak Hill Road intersection as needing, as needing some attention, that has limited, that has limited right-of-way available, there's a lot of complicated issues. It's far from the potential development site, not only Village 35, but some of the other development sites. And so this is really, we determined that really to be a DOT issue, something that the DOT would have to explore, where the township really would not have the ability to, to affect much change at the intersection. So we wanted to spend our efforts looking at the second area, which we identified, which was the Temple Road-Twinbrooks Avenue section of the corridor. And the, the issue is on this, is mainly, is existing issue, you guys drive every day, this happens today, is that we have a lot of volume on Route 35 that overlapping volume because we have a lack of what else is called network connectivity in this area. You have Twinbrooks Avenue, Jug Handle, which kind of ends, you know, there's no approach on the other side. There will be in the future, and King's Highway is realigned. You can't get across from King's Highway to Temple Road. So there's a lot of missing connectivity, and that, that results in vehicles needing to travel through the jug handles, leading to additional volume that probably wouldn't need to be there if connectivity, network connectivity was enhanced. So to explain that, with a brief chart here, we've got, if you're heading northbound Route 35, you want to go to King's Highway, you use the Temple Road Jug Handle, you have to mix with everybody coming down Temple Road, that's queuing. That's queuing. You're mixing with the traffic that wants to head from Temple Road onto Route 35 Southbound. There's a very narrow queuing area, weaving, a short weaving area. So that's what, that's really what's contributing to the queue spillback that occurs on that approach. Existing queue back, queue spillback occurs on the Twinbrooks Avenue. We have a similar issue if you're southbound on Route 35 and you want to get to King's Highway, you want to get to Temple Road, you have to use the Twinbrooks Avenue Jug Handle. Similarly, if you're on King's Highway, you can't immediately straight onto Temple Road, you'd less use the Jug Handle. So we've got a lot of volume now that we doesn't, shouldn't, not necessarily be using this, these Jug Handles if it has to, because of the, the way that the network is organized. We have right-of-way constraints, as I alluded to a few slides ago. Basically, when we look at what the developers for Village 35 are proposing, they're essentially maxing out the improvement level at this intersection. They're providing additional storage capacity, and they're helping to resolve some of the queuing, queue spillback issues that exist today. And finally, we have through traffic. We have a cup through traffic that occurs. I'm sure nobody here has ever seen that, but it does happen, and we obviously don't want to be encouraging that type of activity. And so it's unsafe, and we don't, we don't want that to happen. So that's an issue that we can address as well.
That's where the Starbucks is coming.
This is slide one. This is my slide, just as the, the narrow spot. When you would print this slide, it will show.
Captain, while we're waiting, just a quick clarification. I'm, I'm kind of ingesting what you said, and I'm kind of, my head's trying to create an analogy, but is it safe to say that the situation that we have today in the current bill, what do you call it? What's the, the keyword? Future bill?
A new condition.
Future, in the current condition, in terms of analogy, we're not starting with a good foundation. We're providing, it's, it's kind of a mess today. Is that right? You might have lain place to design that, your respect, we all agree, but not too with design. We all live with it.
No, no, it's definitely, it maybe works way back one of those first designs, but the jug handles are so standard, they don't provide enough capacity for the existing traffic. You're right, this is an existing issue. We're not starting with, you know, great traffic flow and attitude. We're starting with, you know, constrained conditions, which are... Did you do a historical analysis, do you know what these jug handles were initially designed? I didn't.
It's running like sixty-four.
At that time, we got dual eye direct, sixty-four.
So we worked with the township, went through several iterations of various different types of modifications to the Temple Road intersection. This is slide 12, showing those proposed modifications. So there's, there's two things that we're doing with the proposed modification. We're recommending a new group movement from King's Highway onto Temple Road. So we're taking that traffic that currently has to circulate Route 35 Southbound to the Jug Handle at Twinbrooks. We're taking that out of the mix, allowing those vehicles that are on the west side of the corridor that want to get up to the school or want to continue on Temple Road, and have to square the intersection. Secondly, to address the Temple Road, the Temple, Temple Road Jug Handle queue spillback, we're shifting the, we would be shifting the Jug Handle to the north upon the drawing to provide extra queuing space, widening it to two full lanes. One lane would be left, one lane would be right, when you get to Temple Road. By shifting that Jug Handle, we're pulling that intersection back from the main intersection at Route 35, allowing more storage to happen in that area between the Jug Handle and Route 35. This would require a minor strip-taking of the 711 parcel, as well as strip-taking of the abandoned gas station parcel that's on the northeast corner, so that we could align the intersection correctly, provide two left turn lanes and a through right. So in addition to providing extra length between the Jug Handle and Route 35, we're providing more lanes, which is more storage. And as a result, we see that the queuing, so the combination of doing the, the through movement on Temple Road, as well as the, the Jug Handle modifications, would resolve the queue spillback issue that we, that we identified that exists now, and that would continue to exist moving into the future. You can see that in this diagram, which shows how we've changed the corridor speeds. We're, we're backed up to, closer to the existing condition speeds on the corridor, and greatly improved that segment between Temple Road and King's Highway. This is slide 13, future with modifications. Moving on to access and circulation. You already, you've already heard what I have to say on that, so I'm going to kind of breeze through these slides. There's really nothing to point out. I think the internal site circulation is well-designed. It separates the circulating vehicles on-site from parking in front of pedestrians. There's also pedestrian accommodations within the site, as well as connecting to the site. Again, the only, the only issue that we identified in our letter was the single southbound access point. Moving on to next steps, this is slide 16. I skipped over slide 15, it just showed the other half of the site plan. So moving on to slide 16, next steps. Our recommendation out of the corridor study would be to pursue the Temple Road intersection improvements through the redevelopment agreement. That is also going to require the township to meet with NJDOT and other relevant agencies to discuss the proposed plan. This is a conceptual plan, I will note, it's not a design plan. There's no timeline for construction at this moment, we have, still have to work that out. But this, these are just, this is just a conceptual preliminary plan to address those issues with queue spillback that we have identified. The next step, if NJDOT buys in, would be to final design the proposed improvements, again, be permitted, and then obviously eventually constructed. With that, our, kind of our developer, Village 35, next step would be to conduct a post-development study, six months after retail occupancy exceeds 75%. Basically, we, we want the site to be almost fully occupied, so we can see how this, how traffic is being generated, how many trips we're actually seeing, where they're actually coming from, in order to make any decisions on adjusting signal timing to help improve. and optimize interception operations. Doing it six months after that, after we get to that occupancy level allows traffic to normalize, usually when you open a retail site, you'll see potentially higher traffic volumes within the first few weeks or month of the, of the opening, and then everybody kind of settles down and goes to normal operation, so we want to see what happens for the under, under normal operation. Slide 17 is a question, I'm going to stop it here, there's some supporting slides in the back that we need to reference, and it gets us to the 22 total, but for right now, I'm happy to answer any board questions or any other questions.
Do you have any models?
Yes, we have videos from the simulation model, which are amongst the supporting slides.
Because I think that shows better than just some statistics, what the actual conditions were, are in the briefing, so we'll show that.
Oh, yeah, we can, we'll show the simulation, I will say that it differs from what Langen did, with the Langen study, and it, because we've added additional developments to it that are not associated with Village 35, as well as an increased background growth rate to accommodate some other potential future development, so that's, I'll differentiate and say that before we, before we show that simulation. So you can go to, can you go to slide 21 on that one? It's, it might be a little bit hard to see, I'll get up there and explain what we're showing, and the future conditions with, with that, with the group that we discussed. It's a little bit, I'm going to see it, we'll continue to play by screen. There we go. I'm going to come up here to the front.
You just, you could, I'll expand on my course, we're staying on our head.
So this is, this is a result of the future conditions, which again, as I said, accounts for Village 35 plus other developments, and a background growth rate, we're seeing, what you see in the simulation is that the two left lanes of Route 35 are actually moving pretty decently well, it's the right lane here and the center lane that does get some congestion due to the queue spillback that occurs at both of the intersections with this higher future volume. So I'm going to now, it's just a very short video, it's only about a minute, just shows about halfway through the simulation of what we're showing with that. And then finally, moving on to the next slide, which is slide 22. This is the operating conditions with the proposed modifications to, to the jug handles. As you can see, there's that right turn queue, that right lane queuing is pretty much eliminated, this is the same exact time simulation as the last simulation video that was shown. The reason why we see the improvement is more storage capacity on Tyndall Road and down at Twin Brooks Avenue, it's essentially just eliminating some of that traffic that has to circulate through the Twin Brooks Avenue jug handle, because now we're sending folks just straight through from King's Highway on the Tyndall Road, rather than making them circulate. So I think this, this improvement has an overall benefit to township, to the travel public, to developers, future developers.
That includes, not everybody involved, the center aisle, including the nursery, etc.
Yeah, that, that doesn't include any other, it doesn't really show cars coming in and out of that, but it does include the volume associated with that development. I'm going to go back to slide 70. We can use that as a starting point.
I'm going to go ahead to the audience, keep it down, because you get pissed off, or I have to, uh, Twin Brooks intersection, or jug handle. You said actual trips, 38, and understanding it's the only entrance to the development, from southbound, 35, to both the shopping center and to the proposed residential section. You said this is 38% of the trips, what's that number?
That's calculated.
I think it's 38% for the shopping center, 48% for the residential.
That's, that's inbound trips, not, yeah.
And this is peak hours.
This would be inbound trips.
So I have this question, multiple times you mentioned the, the existence of the applicant's proposal, it's just a single point of access from 35, 235 south, but you didn't go any further than just noting that that was a challenge. Do you have any recommendations on how to alleviate that, or is this, or are these your recommendations?
Based on what we, what we took, when we brought this up to, to Village 35 folks, you know, we did talk about the different steps that they had taken to look at additional access points, maybe down by Outback, Woodland, yeah, and some other potential locations that couldn't really work out because of right-of-way constraints. And we will look deeper into the numbers, and we came to the conclusion, or at least I came to the conclusion, that the jug handle at Twin Brooks Avenue with the proposed developer, with the developer proposed improvements, is capable of handling their site-generated traffic. You know, for example, there's a crash or something that disables that intersection for some reason, people do have the ability to go down and make a U-turn at some of the jug handle locations. My recommendation, though, is that we need to, that we should be coupling, not as part of the Village 35, but as part of redevelopment, what we can be afforded through the redevelopment plan is to do those, that Tyndall Road intersection improvement, because that's further going to take traffic out of the Twin Brooks Avenue jug handle. So we think it's going to, you know, we're showing, with the site-generated trips that accommodates with some additional background growth, it starts getting a little congested, so let's take those trips out of the, out of the mix, if we can, get those folks that want to go west to east, let them go west to east without having to circulate unnecessarily on Route 35 at Twin Brooks Avenue.
When you say 38% of the traffic is the, is the southbound, that, that's all traffic, deliveries, public buses, anything, right, all traffic, correct? There's no delineation between residents driving their personal cars versus vehicles or anything like that?
That's all kind of included in the trip generation, we're talking about how many trips are being generated, you know, and it's 38% of those incoming trips for the retail and 49% for the residents, for the whole brothers component, that is. You know, we're talking about, that does include private vehicles, delivery vehicles, you know, taxis, rideshare, that's kind of all, it doesn't distinguish between each individual type of trip.
I think I asked this, this question, the applicants, expert, do you, do you guys have any opinions on where some of the, I guess, retail, it's not my question, so the deliveries, you know, because we've got a giant supermarket, we're going to have public restaurants, all the things, they're going to be getting daily deliveries, do you have a sense of where that's coming from? Right, I mean, just given other roadways that we're looking at, we're either thinking they're either coming from the south, you know, kind of ocean area, or they're coming from the north, probably not a hard way, because you can't have trucks there from the east. Right, so is there any sense of that, because I know, not only in this application, but in other applications, there's this concern that a lot of trucks are cutting through neighborhoods, and that's, that's, that's something that we, at least, I think this board has to think about a little bit, in terms of does this increase that amount of truck traffic that is somewhat incentivized to cut through now the neighborhoods? And I'm thinking specifically, coming off of 35, Red Hill, going in that direction, coming south, using the jug handle, that they get onto the site.
Sorry, can you, 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 by the way, when you're coming down south from, from Red Hill, right, so it's up on, um, Old Bell Road, right, really cutting through the neighborhood a little bit.
I don't recall it was on this application or one of the others, but there was, it kind of shocked me that there was, there's a significant amount of truck traffic that cuts through, what's the, what's the street there, is that, is that the tease with the, with the railroad street, that, King's Highway, sorry, I don't like King's Highway, that comes through there, comes down Red Hill, and comes through there. That was not, that's right, that was on the, the trust, the, yeah, the, with the law property. There's, nobody refused it, I mean, I, I know, we're kind of crossing into a different discussion, but it is the same discussion in the sense that we're adding a significant element of deliveries, commercial deliveries, that appear to be, and that's what my ultimate question is, that appear to be primarily coming from north to south.
I think we have more traffic coming down Bad Hollow, east to west than Red Hill, than Old New Red Hill, and drivers really want to take that route early enough, they really have more clearance, I think more, so they would take Bad Hollow, certainly by King's Highway, when they cut, cut by the way, they actually cut over the new curve at, at, at up.
I think the road improvement will help too.
I would assume so, yeah.
I think that the trucks will be at, if you go a different way, they'll take this by.
My, my question's a volume question, I'm not talking about volume, in that sense, I'm talking about just understanding how those volumes are coming. If, if you're accounting for that, is what my question is.
Yeah, like I said, when we, when we do the trip generation analysis, it includes those general numbers, but we're typically looking at the peak hours in our traffic analysis, and those are not usually where we see a lot of truck delivery activity, you know, they're in the morning, the day, you know, off peak, it's easier for them. Some, depending on the retail site, they may have additional restrictions on when they can receive deliveries, usually off peak of when their activity, when their personal activity peaks. You know, the goal, I think, in order to prevent, you know, trucks from wanting to deviate, is to, is to, you know, through the redevelopment plan, the Tyndall Road improvements, or future improvements by DOT, you know, maybe the township can pressure DOT to look at the Chapel Road, Hill Road intersection more swiftly, you know, keeping 35 as a desirable route is important, you know, and that's what I think we're accomplishing, the reasons that proposed improvements, that we recommend. You know, obviously, there's other constraints, outsides, the way to study area, but in general, keep trucks, they want to build Route 35, it's easy for them to navigate, get them to where they need to go, but, you know, trucks don't want to be on residential streets, unless.
I think we may hear some things about that, or about shopping, but I agree.
So just quickly on that 38%, just a quick round number, I think we're talking about 325 trips, vehicles, and the PM detail. That, that's residential, this is just a off-the-cup kind of estimate, based on.
In that peak hour, you've got 325 total trips for residential and for shopping.
Yeah, round numbers, yeah.
And what's the, what's the clearing ability of that jug handle to deal with the 325 people trying to.
I can't give you the exact answer off the top, I would have to take a deeper look into, into the model to see the capacity, but we, we've got, and the proposed condition has, let me bring, let me see if I can bring that up, so you can take a look at that intersection. We now have two left turn lanes and two through lanes, so typically at an intersection with a signalized left turn, each left turn lane can accommodate somewhere between 300, 300 and 400 vehicles per hour, and each through lane, depending on the length of the green time, which you have to take a deeper look at, I don't have the green times in front of me right now, but in general, we're talking about, you know, anywhere between 800 and 1200 vehicles per hour, probably a little bit on the lower side for these two lanes, because obviously we need to get Route 35 a larger chunk of it in time. So we're talking, you know, existing volumes plus the proposed site-generated volume shouldn't be accommodated, the folks should, in general, should not have to wait more than one cycle to get through, I mean, it depends on when they arrive, through the jug handle, obviously, but based on what, with just the site-generated traffic, we're seeing that vehicles are able to, most vehicles are able to get through in, in a cycle, maybe I'll call it 1.5 cycles if you're kind of coming at the end.
345, there's only those people entering the site, not everybody using the jug handle. Everybody coming south. So if there's people entering the shopping center for the residential, does that include the people coming down to make the effect, the U-turn, that go back up Tyndall Road?
So the PM, the PM peak hour volume, total volume going Twin Brooks Avenue east, approaching the intersection, would be, we've got 550, 315, 25, I mean, we have, well, I'll write it down in terms of. I mean, we have, well, I'll write it down in terms of turning, we've got five hundred and forty-seven lefts. So those people are making, a lot of those people are making the U-turn that we discussed. We have three hundred and fifty frues going straight through, so that includes site-generated traffic plus neighborhood traffic that must go through. And twenty-six right turns, so very low right turn volume.
Those people coming out of the shopping center.
Exactly, exactly.
The residents.
So we're not, we're not, we're not, certainly not approaching the capacity of that approach of the intersection. The, the issue with the queue spillback is largely more due so to the people making the U-turn in those lefts than it is the through movements into the site. So that's why, because when people come across that jug handle to make the left turn, they've got, they've got to go to the left side and make the left turn. So by taking the, taking some of those vehicles out through the Tyndall Road improvements, we can certainly...
Very good, because you've got roughly eight hundred in that hour, in that peak hour, if you don't do the Tyndall Road improvements.
Correct. But those are all existing and background. None of those five hundred and, maybe very few, I can't anticipate why anybody going to the site of the five hundred and forty-seven left turns with our site-generated trips, they're all existing and background.
I'm just trying to decide, understand the total volume that jug handles got to handle, because the only place for that backup to go, backup thirty-five, the southbound side.
That's correct.
Which, if I'm not mistaken, backs it up past Tyndall.
No improvement at Tyndall?
No improvement at Tyndall, and adding the additional backgrounds and site-specific developments we added to them on the exit, we do show it backing up, and the peak queue would be back to Tyndall Road.
Anyone else?
No?
No. No questions?
I'll skip the question. Um, the report of day twenty-eight, and then, actually, there's another report of day twenty-eight, and the track report of day twenty-eight, were the, they filed on our file for the record?
We, we are on the file. I just wanted to point out to the board, and just so that we have John, that on one of the pages, page three or eight, it talks about full taking of the gas station, and we testified that it's partial, because that's what is actually required.
That's correct, yeah, that's a tiny little report, so it'd be, that's a partial taking of the gas station parcel. That's what would be needed.
That's not considered a domain, is it?
Yes.
It is considered.
Six, under the name, it's limited domain, six.
This means that DOT advice is to prove eventual design, that the DOT can require that, what it needs to improve. Whether it's a five-foot strip or an entire park. Is there other in your initial design? Is there any other property that needs to be required?
Yeah, I'll go back to slide, slide twelve. There is a, I'll get up, it's going to end. There's a residential property currently here, which is accessified to jug handle. That would be the full taking of that property. But that property, I understand, is owned by Mount Hill at the moment.
And what we know is the Blue House.
Yes.
So it's not just a piece of it, it's, you gotta go through the whole.
The jug handle goes right, right through it, so it would not be a piece, it would be full taking of that property.
Or...
I don't know. We know that the tax map, a month ago, that lot was reinforced. So the frontage is on the roadway, it would basically only consume by the new exit. It would be angry back.
Okay, I was not aware that it extended that far back, I thought it was just that. So, yeah, if the, if the property extends further back, it would just be the, the developed portion.
That's what happens in back there, between the legs.
Yes.
I mean, I forget how, it's a larger lot, it has frontage on Tyndall, two miles pretty far back, including a lot of weapons, so whether it's taking of the, the value probably is the taking of where that house now exists, the developed portion of the property, owned by that one. Which is not, that lot is not part of this application.
Correct. And, and I'm definitely good, you know, at this point, it's very conceptual, so there isn't how much we need to buy, you know, there might be, at a later stage, you know, any wrestling, because you have wrestling, transition, you know, park or amusement, so all that would be part of the process when you actually start working. Where it would require a portion of that property, where the houses, you know, there's a right in the house, that's where this jug handle actually goes.
I have to look at that question, I'm looking at that. Is your August third, two thousand and eighteen report, is that superseded in all or in part?
It's, it's completely superseded. The, the correct report, most of today's report is day twenty-eight, twenty-two.
Okay, I have that too, I just, I haven't seen, and I'm going to ask the question anyway, but in, in the old report, you had a, another tram which, just for, for purposes of what we all know, is kind of, would be right in front of the shop, excuse me, the seven eleven.
Yeah, and we did, through this process, we looked at several potential alternatives, and that draft of the report did show a potential jug handle on, it did show a potential jug handle here. But we determined that it would not be feasible, essentially cut the parking lot in half with that seven eleven parcel, we likely have to take, we'd like, we'd like this to be a full taking, because it could really restrict any access and circulation. So it did seem prudent to move forward with that, looking further at that alternative.
Any other, any more questions?
Can you speak to whether or not your client has the ability to dedicate that additional liability on the Green House lot, or can, can otherwise through, acquired from?
Like I said, this property is coming up, the Blue House, another lot, that's not part of this subject application.
I cannot state that at this point, we're not bad at it, we cannot make that statement at this point.
All right. Add it up first, over to the public. Questions other Mr. Catherine?
Yes, man, I'm going to swear to you first, and then I'm going to introduce the three. She swears that's mine, yeah. Here you go. And here you go.
You don't need to, she's just swearing in a witness.
Mr. Catherine, your study covers three hundred and eighty thousand square feet of regular retail instead of the three hundred and thirty-two thousand square feet of retail. Is that correct?
I believe it's three hundred and forty-two thousand square feet, correct?
Sorry?
Yeah, uh, yeah, we, we decided to keep with the conservative analysis provided by Langen to keep it at a higher trip generation, so we're extra, what I call conservative in the findings.
Is that difference considered to be the same as Awainment?
It's probably more, I would say it's more so than Awainment, because Awainment is just one component of the overall site, which is, you know, Awainment's square footage is included in three forty-two. Without the additional trip credits that I spoke about that have not taken, in my opinion, based on doing this, you know, twelve years, that, or, or that difference of forty thousand square feet is likely more than the difference of Awainment. Generally, I can't say for sure, you know, things, different things happen, maybe people like this Awainment more than another Awainment, or something happens that we don't, we can't anticipate, but just based on trip generation estimates, in my opinion, it's likely that that forty thousand additional square feet is more than what we've generated by additional generation by the Awainment outside of, let's say we put a typical, typical grocery store.
On the progress status report for Village Thirty-Five, done by your company on October fifteenth, two thousand and seventeen, the work performed doesn't seem to coincide with the final report. I had all those documents, and basically, I wanted to know where the worksheet data is showing the trip generation for the Awainment and the formula you use to assess it, because that was part of what you were supposed to be doing, and it's not in this final report. So for you to, to tell me that this forty-some-odd thousand square feet is definitely going to cover it, but yet I don't see the actual data from the report, which I know is why you were hired, I would just like to see that.
I mean, that's true, I mean, we do have, we do have superseded versions of the draft report, and that, and through the probably two years, two and a half years we've worked on this study, it's progressed over time to, to evaluating different aspects of, it's become more focused in the direction of, you know, what, what additional things can we do as a result of the redevelopment plan, what that affords us to do, you know, basically what can we do with that, and that's, let's maintain our focus now on the quarter or optimizing that. Uh, you know, we still did review the, the traffic study by Langen, and we did, we did compare it to a single study done in nineteen ninety-eight by I T E, it's an old study done in upstate New York, where Awainment are even more popular than they are down here, and, you know, we did compare those trips, I don't know what the numbers are off the top of my head, we decided that it was irrelevant to the present report and the direction that the report was going. And we had Mr. Penkey's testimony toward their evaluation of, of another similar type of Awainment that was done in, we asked them to talk about it, he testified to it.
Yeah, him, you know, of course he's going to say that, you're saying that. Also on this worksheet, you were supposed to look at neighborhood cut through traffic. And I had come specifically to many meetings to discuss this topic, I was told it was going to happen, I had requested this study for years, I have yet to see any neighborhood cut through traffic data, and I don't know where it is, and it shouldn't be this hard to get, and I'm hoping you assessed it. All I saw was your cut through traffic for the island, I didn't see anything that said there could be neighborhood cut through traffic, we assessed it, because if you don't have the forecounts now, what is it going to be like later? How do we do the comparison? You know, if you think these jug handles might not work, might overflow, later on, six months after the project, when we're not, people will find another way to go, and then we will not have the before counts. If right now there's not a lot of cut through traffic, that's great, but six months after the project, it could be hundreds of cars going down a twenty-five mile an hour road. So the fact that that was part of your work study, and I don't see it, I'm just asking, what happened to that data?
Well, I would say we do have that data, we have the counts that were done at the intersection of Twin Brooks Avenue, we know what the existing volume is coming that way, and on all the side street approaches to Route thirty-five, so we would be able to go back in the future, and when we go, when the developer goes back and compares, does their future condition study after the site's developed, they'll be able to compare what they estimated would be the approach volume from, say, Twin Brooks Avenue, and how that compares to what it actually is in the future. So we have that volume.
So there was no counts off Kings Highway, we, we call it Old Kings Highway, Kings Highway West, whatever you want to call it, so there's no confusion with Kings Highway East, in terms of Spruce Drive, Grandineway, Cut Grues, in terms of any of those streets, Church Street, you know, that's, that area is going to be hit really hard because of this project, I'm sure you realize that. And it seems like all the focus was just on this one area, and I understand that this will alleviate some congestion, but I feel like the sober study was very narrow.
Can I just caution, these are questions, I mean, inclusively in there, you're trying to say, do you agree with it?
It's said in the work study, I have the documents here, okay, they're highlighted in terms of what he was supposed to do for this project in, over the last couple of years, and that was one of the things they were supposed to look at. If there's data, I would really like to see it, that's all I'm asking.
We, again, I would say that we have, we know the volumes that are coming, ultimately the, your concern is that traffic generated from this site will come down Kings Highway and circulate through the neighborhood and come out on Twin Brooks Avenue. But we know what the, we have projected the traffic on Twin Brooks Avenue without any, uh, Langen and through our review would agree, has projected the traffic, you know, they assumed no cut through. So we have a baseline now in which to compare the future condition, what if we see any cut through traffic. My goal, and the goal of the quarter study, was to make Route thirty-five and these intersections on, you know, with Kings Highway and the road, Route thirty-five itself, is to make that the most attractive route for drivers.
Right, and I understand that. On the Langen study, they show traffic going into Twin Brooks, but they don't show exactly if it's turning into the stop and shop or going past the stop and shop into the neighborhood. The way the current jug handle is, which I brought up at the last meeting, it's not existing condition, it's very, nobody really utilizes it to go into the neighborhood. So you have five or eight cars at Pete Gower now, and then Langen's study shows ninety-seven cars at Pete Gower. That's quite the jump from five cars to ninety-something cars going into that neighborhood. So that to me is quite significant, and I'm not sure if you assessed it as well, and maybe your counts were different based on how you assessed it. That's pretty significant.
I don't have the diagram in front of me, but what I will say is that when we did do our assessment of the potential for pass-through traffic, it's not an easy number to come up with.
Right.
It's, everything that we do as traffic engineers is, is based on our best ability to estimate trips and driver behavior. Drivers do whatever they want to do, because that's where, that's, that's just how people get around, they want to go cut through the neighborhood. We can make Kings Highway and Route thirty-five southbound the best road in the state of New Jersey, and somebody locally says, I like to drive through the neighborhood to get to make it. So it's very hard to predict that type of traffic. In our opinion, we don't feel that it's a significant measurable number at this point, and I think Mr. Penkey testified to something similar.
What could be a significant measurable number? What is, what is that number?
I couldn't say.
As a traffic, aren't there neighborhood numbers for how much traffic should be considered something that needs to be mitigated?
It's typically based on, you know, in that case, it would be based on the, you know, resident concerns, because you could say, well, I've got, you know, if we say, let's say we're adding sixty cars through, in the peak hour, through the neighborhood, that's one car a minute. Some people might not notice that type, that level of traffic going through their neighborhood, other people that are very aware might say, that's a lot of traffic going through our neighborhood. So it's very subjective as to what would be, what would be considered significant.
What happens after the mall was built, and we had hundreds of cars coming in, what came in then? That's, that's why I'm standing here, I would like to know, what can we do then, you talk about a six month after the mall's seventy-five percent built at that point, what can be done besides some timing and phasing? We would like to see either left turn lanes into this mall, we would like they have the road, something a little bit more than just jug handles that might not work, some will, some won't. What else can we do?
I would, in my opinion, you are not going to see that level of cut through traffic, but if cut through traffic becomes a concern, there are traffic calming measures that can be implemented to further make the neighborhood streets less attractive for pass-through drivers.
There's not much you can do on my street, honestly. You can't, you can't put those speedboats, they're too loud, they'll dig them up with the plows, people speed down there all the time, and there's no sidewalks. And, you know, there's Brandy Way as well, which is a pretty big wide street, people speed there too. And then we have Kings Highway. And then we have King's Highway also, you know, so one of my other questions, I'm just going to jump over to this here. This area here.
Just quick, I hate the daylight. Can you just pull the scan closer so you can get a picture of that?
Where are the cars going to queue that are going across? Are you inviting traffic now on King's Highway for this new connection? Because with the Church Street traffic light that we have now, we have a lot of traffic that backs up in front of people's homes and dark streets, even though the light was needed, there was a lot of accidents over there. So we already have that, and then we have a lot more traffic, maybe double the traffic counts coming off Critical Road from what I've seen in these traffic studies, that's a lot of traffic, traffic coming from Church Street. And then, now that you're doing this connection, does that mean people have to make a right at Sears, which is the new shopping eventually, and you're directing traffic down to this historic community so that I can sit here at this light and then cut across? Or is there going to be another jug handle over there holding there?
At this time, there's no plan for any additional jug handles on that side of the roadway. We have queuing area that, based on our traffic analysis, accommodates our anticipated volume within the kind of two lane segment that we have for short distance neighborhood on King's Highway. I can't, you know, it's, it's difficult again to project how traffic circulation is going to change farther outside of the study area. Will people come down 35 and go down Mohammed to connect with King's Highway and come across? Could they come further up on King's Highway and come across? Sure, it's a possibility.
You think you have enough stacking area not to block the current entrance to the town hall where the clerk's office is?
Sir, Mr. Penkey, just, sure, where are you pointing?
Oh, um, I don't know if you can see, but over here, right here in front of Town Hall, I'm talking about in here to that first entrance where the clerk's office is. My question is, if you're inviting cars to make the right at the Sears to come down to now connect to Tyndale Road, where all the cars queue up? Do they queue up and block this one entrance in front of Town Hall? Do they go on a new jug handle that's near, I guess, the EMO? What is the plan for the queuing? Do they shut up in front of Spruce Drive? I don't know how many lanes you have there, or where the cars are anticipated to go, or how many cars.
Do you mean traffic coming south of 35 and stuff, into 35, then cut through King's Highway here?
Well, now, if you make the connection to Tyndale Road, and let's say you're alleviating traffic in the Twin Brooks jug handle, how many cars would you say use the Twin Brooks jug handle to utilize Tyndale Road? Is it half the capacity now?
I would, we estimated that that was, that that volume would be about 250 vehicles.
So the 250 vehicles that will now maybe not use the Twin Brooks jug and will now have another way to get across to Tyndale, are they just going to line up in front of the town hall here?
I mean, it's not 250 vehicles at once, it's over, it's over an hour, and we designed the, when we did the preliminary design, our conceptual design for this, we ensured that we had queuing capacity there, and that the signal was timed appropriately, you know, it doesn't even, you know, in the simulation, it doesn't even back up. Sometimes it backs up past that first driveway to the town hall, which is not going to be there in the future anyways, but it doesn't, it doesn't get back to Spruce Street. I'll say this is preliminary, preliminary conceptual planning level analysis. When we get into design and get further vetted, you know, it's not like we're going to go out tomorrow and build this. There's a lot of steps, a lot more analysis and design that goes into changes like this. These are just planning studies, or planning level conceptual designs that work from a geometric and traffic flow standpoint based on our analysis.
I'm only asking because the King's Highway Village community, you know, we're getting a lot of traffic already, and to invite traffic to come down there for a new connection without having a queuing capacity or a place to put the cars with no other jug handle there, keep it on Route 35, seems a little, you know, something, yeah, it just seems like something should be planned out a little better. If you're going to do it, can, can you put another jug handle over here?
That could be, I mean, that's, again, that's, I would say that's something that could be explored, and it's not, this is not the last time that you would like to hear about this improvement, that's something that can be explored in the future. This is just a potential mitigation option that we felt was feasible, you know, the community can certainly speak to the board in the future about this and make some design changes in the future. Like I said, it's not, it's not the design, it's not getting out on the street tomorrow. And it actually doesn't really have too much to do with Village 35 itself. So there'll be more, but what I'm saying is there'll be more opportunity to discuss this.
One of my other questions is, how many developments on Route 35 did you study in your, in your data? I saw that in your report that you had 600 some odd trips on Saturday for the, I don't know, seven developments that the township gave you, and 200 some odd trips, site trips or background trips added, but there's a lot of other developments that are happening on Route 35, and we made a list of them, and you don't have them included, and that's a lot of other background traffic that's not included in the study. I was just curious how you came up with those in particular, and why some of the others.
Those were provided by the township to us, the developments that were, that we included, and in addition, we included a conservative growth rate, in my opinion, given that, you know, through multiple studies, both that we've done and that Langen has done, showed essentially no growth on the core from, from when those original volumes were conducted in, I believe, 2014. So we added, we added percent, we added a growth rate on there to accommodate other unspecified developments that could happen in the future. The development list that you have made, changing our development list was probably provided to us in 2013 or so.
I think I thought of you to as well, and then the other thing too is that we also conservative, like, for example, you did the right bottom center application, now that people have been introduced from clients, very recently, they pulled out, so you don't know if that you have to go ahead or not. So, you know, so with these kind of things, you try your best, whatever is, for example, we had, D B B is going through, this other, it was, I can't remember, it was this child care center, and they, they withdrew, so, you know, all these things are, it's a estimate, that's why I would imagine you apply growth rate.
Yeah, there's, we always apply growth rate despite history, because we never know what's coming down, we never know everything that's coming down the line, and so by applying our growth rate, you know, we can, we can help to accommodate those things.
What I ask is because 600 trips, you must plot when the overall site trips, you know, per hour, you know, from the Langen study are like 1,600 or whatever. So that, that is a lot of trips, and that's not all the developments. That's the only reason I bring that up, is we want to know there's two pad sites at the town hall, there's extra square footage at the town hall, there's extra people at the town hall going back and forth from lunch to the mall, there's, there's a lot of things to consider here.
I can't verify the 600 number, that may be from an older report, but I would say that, feeling we met it quickly, in my opinion, we met it quickly, accommodated the potential future growth through the study period. Obviously, there'll be more growth in the future, so that's why, even beyond, even beyond what we're looking at.
Was your study, I thought it was the 2020 future, so 2020 is like coming up, that's not a five year build out.
That's correct.
So wouldn't a normal future build out be five years?
There's no, I wouldn't say there's a normal future build out, but we were, what we were going after is, is when, based on, you know, this, this, the traffic study for Langen for the Village 35, and our study had been started years ago, when 2020 was actually a reasonable rising year, so we kind of just kept, kept with that hard date as, as what we were, what we were looking at. And the fact that we haven't seen any growth, or accommodating additional growth, if we went out there today, the volumes are equal to, or in some cases even less than what was counted back in 2014, which is what our studies.
It's not possible.
Okay. If this happens, this mitigation, and there's, let's say, 250 cars in the jug handle now, and you propose this, is the end result for the jug handle to be the way it is now, is that what's really going to happen? I think I saw that in your report, where it's kind of like the existing condition, if you do this mitigation when the mall is built. Does that make sense?
You're asking, you're saying is our goal to get back to existing conditions or better than existing?
That's what it sounded like in terms of the counts, that it would be similar, very similar in terms of the traffic counts to the current existing condition.
In terms of volume?
Yes.
Probably yes, in terms of volume.
Okay.
But it's the, the, again, the geometry of that Twin Brooks Avenue jug handle is changing significantly to the existing condition, so to say that the volume might be similar to the existing condition if we take some of that volume movement through King's Highway, to Tyndale Road through movement, but the observations wouldn't be much improved.
What I heard is, I remember hearing Mr. Penkey talk about that ongoing, I think this could be a little inaccurate, 60 feet depth to 160 or 170 feet, but that doesn't equate to how many cars and capacity. Do you kind of have an idea with that square footage going from how many cars it queues now to how many cars you think you will, or is extra square footage, or there's no way to count that?
You can, you can estimate it, you assume, we assume that vehicles in queue are about, take about 20 feet, take about 20 feet of space, so right now, I believe there's two lanes, right, correct, on the, on the Twin Brooks Avenue approach.
Okay.
We have 60 feet, let's say we have 60 feet of storage, so that's three vehicles in each lane, so that's six vehicles, a maximum of six vehicles we can store between the two existing lanes. But we go to 160 feet, that's eight vehicles per lane, we have four lanes, we can store a lot more vehicles in the existing condition.
Could you by any chance account for any neighborhood traffic cutting through back account at that light that it means anybody coming in from the jug handle?
The way that the traffic simulation works is that we do have that lane coming from the neighborhood and from the traffic center feeding into that, so we can see how that queues up and does affect the building from the jug and the traffic exit.
Is there any way we're going to see some of these traffic counts that you already have there for these, because it says conducted a field visit and assessment of the existing study area, both the potential local side street. You mentioned that you have some data, will we be able to get some of this data?
The traffic counts that we, that we utilized were those from the Langen Traffic Impact Center, because we found in our, when we went out and did the spot counts to look at how volumes changed, we found that those volumes were higher than when we went out in 2017 to do our spot counts. So we decided to continue to use the Langen volumes, as they were more conservative than the updated traffic volumes that we had conducted in the spot counts.
Is there any way that you would come up with a different design instead of directly connecting this mall to the neighborhood, because right now it's not? And you mentioned you didn't do Saturdays counts, the reason that Saturdays are not important now is because the only thing that's ever.
No, we do have Saturdays counts.
But you mentioned you need to do a chart for Saturday.
No, we didn't do, we didn't continue the analysis on the Saturdays, because we're focusing on the PM, which is a critical peak hour for traffic volume. So we have volumes, we just didn't, didn't complete the analysis from Saturdays.
But when the wagons is built and it's a peak hour on a Saturday, isn't that going to be significant traffic? That whole mall and all of that?
But you have to remember, that's also, that also is getting added to Friday too, when you have a lot of restaurant activity, you have, you still have a lot of grocery store activity, so in my opinion, this critical app, peak hour will stay, we didn't, particularly maybe to Thursday or Friday.
You need that on the cards, and then you need a Saturday shopping.
Yes.
Did you account for any traffic counts, where any of the drivers coming from Lindcroft, from Leighton Road or Church Street, going in those areas? In your study.
No, yes, that's accounted for in the trip distribution, which does have vehicles coming, the last intersection to the west that we analyzed was Red Hill Road.
So it's just all Red Hill Road, nothing on Church Street, correct?
No, just only signalized intersections, we only, data was only collected at signalizers.
Church Street is now a signalized intersection.
Yeah, I, that, yes, but the data that we have, we did not have Church Street included in that, in that table.
Since that's where our train station is, so you've had a lot of volume coming there, that that's being sure of. Let's see, and you need to do any AM rush hour?
Just to follow up, so we're seeing Lindcroft traffic, that's the only little tunnel here, he's not counted.
Then, that's not what we know.
Little town Lindcroft Road into Church Street, what Mr. Penkey.
The volume is on our counts for King's Highway, we just don't have the specific turning when the cars up at intersections, but the downstream effect of that traffic is accounted for in the counts that we do.
So if they do right or left on King's Highway, each entrance to Route 35 is accounted for, that's correct?
Yes, they have that Red Hill Road, so they turn right.
Red Hill Road, right, left, or King's Highway, right, left, you have counts if you go in that Route 35.
We have counts for Route 35 here at Tyndale Road. We have counts of Red Hill Road, so if they did turn, if they did come down right, and they turned right on King's Highway, they would be captured in the Red Hill Road counts. If they turned left, it would be captured in these.
So in terms of your group and the group projections on Route 35, as a counter to all the other groups, that's a question, do they have all those other streets there? Perhaps not say mine is related, is that in your group or group rate? All that stuff, you're just assuming that people will come from the south on Route 35, that traffic will increase as buildings that are concerned with those.
Doesn't grow, correct.
Because it's not they go right, they go right out, oh, they're already at 35.
Yeah, there's a lot of different ways that, that definitely exists.
Okay, and you, I think I asked this, you didn't do any AM rush hour?
No.
Because now you know, now the mall is pretty much connected to the neighborhood and the train station and the parkway, and it's not really connected now. So now we're going to have a whole residential component of 350 units, plus, you know, you're making a direct link to a whole, to the other side of the road, but so it kind of seemed odd that now you're not doing that now. It's not an existing condition now, so the fact that we don't have it seems kind of odd to me that it wasn't studied. Do you plan on studying it?
Not unless directed by the township to evaluate it, it was not evaluated, because retail activity is fairly low in AM peak hour, even though there's, it seems like 350 residential units is a lot, it, trip generation from that amount of residential units compared to the overall traffic volume that exists on, in the area now, is probably a very small percentage of that. And it just seemed, we wanted to focus on making the critical peak hour, accommodating that critical peak hour, and thus flushing out every other peak hour that's less than that would, would obviously carry some.
The main concern for us is not just the 350 units, you're now connecting the entire other side of King's Highway into the other side of the road, and then you have the buses in the morning as well. It's really congested over there in the morning, King's Highway, all of it, near the train, near the parkway, everything. And I think you just, it's very difficult for you to understand, but we live it, and the fact that it's now going to be connected, it's not just that residential unit, it's everybody out there who wants to drive to the other side of the road.
I don't have any objections to the analyzing the AM peak hour, I would say that I don't believe it's going to change any of our study findings or the concept of plan that stands.
Now, you don't think that traffic would back up at the Twin Brooks with this mitigation in your program or any of that, you think it's one, one and a half cycles that would go through, is that correct?
Yes.
I did want to bring up Shackle Hill Road, you had mentioned it, that you looked at it. This is a tricky one, because you are going to have a lot of traffic that's going to come from, you know, the Lindcroft area, okay, and that is going to want to go to the mall, okay? What is the plan for assessing that intersection? You know, that jug handle, it takes, it's down, you can't utilize it all the time, it's a little primitive businesses over there. How and when would this be booked out by V O D? Who's going to follow up on it? Because it's going to get pretty bad over there. I understand not everybody's capable of doing things, but when could this be discussed earlier date?
I can't answer that question.
One question, so, one question is Shackle Hill Road, I understand we can't fix. I understand we can't fix everything, but when that intersection doesn't work, who's responsible for it? This mall will have something to do with it. It's not the, it's kind of an existing condition now where it's very tricky over there, but once you get into the whole, those 35 components, it's going to get worse. So how do we follow up with that, and whose responsibility is it?
Did you shovel 35 by the old?
Yes, that Oak Hill Road jug handle that's really tricky to get across to the old foods going south, you know, it's tricky now, you know? So I was just curious, you had mentioned that if there's no man's business there, the business is there, and that would be up with DOT, when would it be up to DOT? How does this get solved?
Well, we didn't-
What do we do with the DOT next? We got to, and that's what we are worried, so as we progress ahead, you know, that's something that we need to do. But, you know, we're at now, we're just, this is a nice thing now. I understand. And so, yes, we are, we're going to stay with the second direction, we are according to meet with the DOT next week, we have an appointment that's, let's see what we hold from that. Okay, I just don't want to be forgotten about. I don't think it would be forgotten, because there are two things. I think that not-
Remember, we're at the mercy of the DOT.
I know, that's why I was asking. But we are taking proactive steps, the township is taking proactive steps, we have an appointment next week, you know, so we will be saving some of the DOT, it's not that much of a difference. Okay? I had another question somewhere. There are two roads under 35, Apple Farm Road and High Street. They both don't have delayed lights. It's an odd condition under 35. With the extra traffic and Apple Farm Road being mentioned as a second jug handle, will that get mitigated? Do you understand what I'm asking?
Yes.
The opposing traffic doesn't have delay on either one, and they're both expected to get more traffic.
When you say delay, you're talking about left turn, lead left turn?
I'm talking how there's two jug handles or, you know, across from each other.
Oh, okay.
Right? And, you know, it's tricky. Some of the, all the other roads have delay, and those two don't. So if you have people coming from out of the area, they're not going to understand what's going on from there. And you're asked, and you have additional traffic at both of those intersections. Isn't that something that maybe the township should consider at some point? The DOT is coming to do, you know, mediation on some of these traffic lights that are long, completely blocked, who's not going to-
The township can always reach out to the DOT and request, you know, traffic system like timing modification and things like that. The DOT, you know, they can get around to it. It's like, it's kind of mercy of the DOT, and it's possible that we could definitely bring it up during the meetings as well.
Have you ever thought about just having some of the projects built and then seeing what the traffic implications are instead of 75% of it?
Well, if it's 75% of occupation, it's not 75% of construction, so they could have the full thing constructed before they get to 75% of occupation. But that's not really something that was in my purview to sort of amend it. They're coming with an application for something, I mean, that's their application.
How come left turn lanes are never considered?
Typically, we like to maintain a driver expectation on a corridor, and this corridor has jug handles from most parts. And mixing left turn lanes and jug handles becomes problematic from driver expectation standpoint, also intersection capacities standpoint. Or we're typically able to use the additional capacity that you have on the low volume side street to take that, what we would call left turn volume, and swing it to the side street so that we can operate a signal at two phases, which is far more efficient than, say, a three-phase intersection, which would be required if you had a signalized left turn.
I ask because of this intersection. You know, this, all this traffic coming down King's Highway, that can be an issue where if you kept, if you have two left turn lanes or a left turn lane on Tindall, you could keep all the traffic on Route 35, and nobody has to come down King's Highway. It's just a thought. I understand, that's why I asked for that consistency for Apple Farm and High Street, I can't get inconsistent already. You know, so just to mention.
So, Mr. Fankie, anything you want to ask? He was here, he was asking questions about traffic simulation, and you kind of downplayed the relevance and significance of traffic simulations. It seems like a lot of your testimony is based on traffic simulation. I'm just trying to reconcile the, which is more accurate and used in the industry, which is seeming to be contradictory.
I mean, I personally, my, when we have complicated movements, my personal default is to go with a, with a traffic simulation that's calibrated to existing conditions. And that's the key, and I think that's somewhere far on my property, is that you have to be very careful about how you are calibrating your simulation model, because these models are very finicky. You know, one change, a small change in one number, you could go from no congestion on roadway to the roadway being completely congested. So we have to be very careful on how those are applied. I think it's just up to the opinion of the traffic engineer that's working also, what's required by DOT. They're under DOT requirements. I'm not under DOT requirements necessarily, so I'm not submitting to DOT so I can, you know, I have a little, potentially a little bit more leeway, but, you know, I always had a mentor that said, if you give the same problem to 10 different traffic engineers, you'll get 11 different answers. It's not an exact science. The process is, is what you feel comfortable and you can defend, and Mr. Fankie prefers the more, I would say, the formulaic highway capacity manual approach. I can't say anything bad about that approach either. I think, I think the simulation helps to visualize traffic issues easier. For example, in the simulation, you'll see that as you approach, in Twinbrooks Avenue, as you approach Tindall Road northbound, that right lane has some congestion in it. That might not be readily apparent through highway capacity manual based analysis, which is looking at lane groups and that type of thing to come up with the operational statistics. It's not wrong, it's just different.
So one of the things, when you initially started, the scope of your analysis included King's Highway East, I heard any conversation around any analysis on traffic on King's Highway East in earlier, in, Mr. Fankie had stated earlier that the traffic was roughly doubling on King's Highway East. So I'm just curious, was it part of the study? What were the findings? Did they concur? I didn't hear anything about that.
Yeah, we didn't really discuss it at great depth in the presentation because of what we found in our analysis was that it continued to operate similarly to as it does now. Even though we're increasing traffic, there's additional capacity on the roadway that's able to accommodate that increase in traffic. I can't say, I can't off the top of my head remember what the level of service results were for, say, the Red Hill Road intersection, but nothing, nothing came up in our analysis that said, oh, we need to address that additional investigation of these intersections.
I'm confused, I'm sorry, I don't understand the Red Hill, King's Highway East intersection.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm thinking, I was talking about King's Highway West. I'm sorry, you're talking about King's Highway East. Same thing, we had that intersection, the intersection along King's Highway East, we didn't see any significant degradation and delay, and we didn't feel that any additional mitigation measures were required.
Did your simulation study concur with the doubling of traffic on the road on King's Highway East?
Well, the simulation is, does not, we tell, we tell the simulation how much traffic goes into it, it doesn't come up in chat. So we told it, okay, whatever the volume is that was generated by the development, that goes in the simulation.
So you put Mr. Fankie's numbers into the simulation?
Correct.
So you got the same result? Right? I'm just curious about how it's independent if you're basing it upon, if you're taking his numbers and plugging them in?
It's independent in that we evaluated their process, we evaluated their data collection, we evaluated their trip generation, we found that we did have any comments on it, and so we were able to apply that in our analysis. So we did evaluate, and if we felt like a change was needed, we would have made a change to the trip generation estimates when we did our analysis, but we didn't feel that there was required.
So the assumptions perched for all of your simulations, was there any deviation? Or did you 100% concur with every assumption that they had made?
No, I mean, we calibrated our model outside of that. They didn't have a simulation model to calibrate, so we calibrated our simulation model based on the travel time runs that we collected on the corridor. So that's where we start to differentiate. When we're talking about operation, I think Mr. Fankie, if he was here, I can't speak for him, based on our conversation previously, doesn't feel that our estimates for Q spillback are, that he feels that our estimates for Q spillback are more than what would actually happen, or we stand by our estimates. So again, so that's where we, that's another area where we differ, and that's what led to these proposed modifications.
So I'm sorry, maybe I'm missing something. If we're saying there's 100 cars, maybe after 100 cars an hour on King's Highway East now, and he said there's 200 cars now after this dump, did we just use, did you just use the 200, or how do you validate the 200? That's what I'm trying to get, did you just use that?
Yeah, we validated their trip generation analysis first. We checked the process that they went through, validated that the numbers were calculated correctly, looked at the trip distribution and their gravity models, assumptions, found that they were reasonable. I mean, we could sit here and, I could sit here and argue with them that I think it's 40% coming from this direction rather than 38%, but that doesn't really change the general findings of the traffic flow, which we concur with. The nuances between our study and their study is additional background traffic and development traffic, as well as how it was analyzed.
And then, I'm just curious, during construction, how, was that so fast too? I don't know the timeline and any order that things are done in for construction. Is there a recommendation that came out of your study that, let's say, these things should be done first, the remediation, alleviating traffic during construction of a larger project? Is there a recommendation for that?
We did not recommend any sort of up timing in our study. This, their, the Village 35 development has accommodated, has addressed their site-generated traffic. Their roadway improvements, which have been approved by DOT, they're permitted, if the site development's approved, they're likely to get their roadway improvements in for these additional proposed modifications, which will be done by the township through the redevelopment.
As, kind of along the same lines, as an independent looking at this, would you recommend that be done without these improvements, that development be done without these improvements?
My opinion is that the development, the proposed improvements they have posed accommodates and is appropriate for their site. When you start, as traffic continues to grow in the future, this is going to become more critical, it's an existing issue today, so I can't tie the full need for this improvement on that specific development, on Village 35. It's been a longstanding issue, continues to be an issue today, will be an issue in the future, will have additional development. And so I think, in my opinion, they build their, they should be able to accommodate their site trips with their proposed improvement, which would certainly, I think, improve one of their major intersections that they're also improving, but it's not necessarily wanting for people to be able to access their site safely and efficiently.
And then just the conversation you had around, you know, eminent domain and the area, kind of standing in front of camera, kind of over here, in the last, you know, Mr. Fankie had stated that one of the questions asked was, if you could design the Twinbrooks Turn any way you could, how would you do it, and why aren't you doing that? And it was that there was a right away, a contriction, I'm, 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 sorry, but the stop and stop parking lot. Why can't that same methodology be approached as you're doing here there to fix that area? I'm just curious.
Well, the right way impacts of this plan are theoretically, I will say theoretically less significant in that parcel, that residential parcel there is owned by Mountain Hill, and they may, I can't speak for them, but I'm sure they had incentive to support this. And there's a strip taping on the other side of the road that is an abandoned, you know, gas station essentially. The parking lot and the detention basin that is on the Twinbrooks, that's restricting the Twinbrooks Avenue intersection from program improvement, that would be a very significant fight, I would imagine. I don't, I can't speak for the owners of that parcel, and I'm sure they're maybe not as inclined to provide that property. And, you know, eminent domain is another significant process in a situation like that. You also have to redesign their entire stormwater management system because it would affect their, it would likely be affecting their stormwater detention basin. And furthermore, their four-lane approach that they've already designed is pretty significant. And I wouldn't see, I would not recommend, say, three left turn lanes off the, you know, off the Twinbrooks Avenue or anything like that. I think what they have designed is appropriate for that single intersection. We don't want, what we want to do is have better network connectivity, distributes the site trips more efficiently, or not site trips, distributes traffic in general more efficiently, and rather than trying to force everybody to use one particular intersection and building that intersection out to be a behemoth.
All right, thank you.
I suppose that we're going to have, King's Highway East has two, two handed times additional traffic coming in the same order, which is one lane this way and one lane that way. And instead of a traffic count, which we didn't have, so I'll give you a, 156, it's going from 156 to 354 at PM peak hours, and it's going from 215 to 498 on Saturday peak hours, and it's a first bill. So I don't understand how you could say that it's not an event, that this traffic increased.
I mean, I would say that maybe my words are, that's not, I tended to say that it's not, it's not an event, but what I'm trying to say is that the additional volume, when you look at the capacity analysis at the intersections along the corridor, they, it does not, the additional volume does not elevate the conditions to a point where we would need additional mitigation measures. The volume right now, as you stated, is fairly low. I mean, 150, I think you said?
156.
156. In the general scheme of things, I know for people that live along the roads, I, you know, I'm not trying to diminish the traffic level, but that's far, far, far below the capacity of that roadway, and we're not even coming even within half of the capacity of the roadway with the additional site-generated traffic.
But it's one road this way, one lane this way, one lane that way, and there's no way to wipe it because there's no place to go. So I don't, I live there, and I'm sorry, I don't agree that it's not going to impact, it's going to, it's going to impact. The other day, I went down to 35, I was going down to 35, and someone was in the lane making a left-hand turn into Circus Lovers, and there was traffic coming the other way, and so they couldn't make a left-hand turn for quite a minute of time, and we were all backed up. And that's with the not too much traffic. Not good. And then on page three of this San Jeff Traffic Review, and I quote- And then on page three of this San Jeff Traffic Review, and I quote, "Our independent analysis of the proposed development shows the traffic conditions on King's Highway East, east of the site, would remain consistent with the no build condition." Really? How can you say that? It's not, the building, it doesn't have any impact at all. And there's going to be significant traffic increase, people coming from Sleepy Hollow, from East Road, from Madison, and with 36 to New Life Mall, and they have to go home again.
We're talking about, I, I think it's important to separate volume from operation. Obviously, volume affects operations, but you have to think of, I'm trying to think of an example, like, take this bottle. Right now, it's about half full, it's not overflowing. So we're looking for what it's getting, you know, as traffic engineers, we look for when this bottle is getting filled closer to the top. That tells us we're going to have an issue, we're going to have some sample queuing, queue spillback along the corridor. So if we've got, you know, let's say the bottle right down the roadway is probably a quarter of the way filled, we're adding double that, so now we're half of the way filled, and we're still, we still haven't reached a threshold of volume where we will start to see, you know, degradation, significant degradation on the service, like the DOT requires increases of 10 seconds of delay, 10 seconds or more of delay per vehicle, requires mitigation, I know it's not DOT broken, but that's what we, that's what we are looking at when we're determining whether or not we feel that any additional mitigation measures are necessary.
Okay, well, I drive it every day, and I respectfully disagree. All right, and then allowing for these major increases in traffic, are you saying that the local roads are going to have to shoulder the burden of people that don't want to go on Route 35, or do 35 can't handle?
No, what I'm saying is that we're, between this improvement and the proposed improvement, developer improvements, that's our opinion, that Route 35 will be the most attractive route to take, or not be to circulate through the narrow, low volume, or, not low volume, the narrow residential, more residential constrained streets. And you're wanting, people want to take the most, the easiest, most direct routes to their destination usually. You're always going to have the outliers that would take some big drive through a neighborhood or something like that, but in general, we're designing to, to make Route 35 the most attractive route.
You know, some of these streets between, like East Lane and Sleepy Hollow, that's going to be the indirect way into the mall.
Have you accounted for that in the, that's been accounted for in this study?
Okay, so then six months down the road, when you look at it again, and you find out that the traffic was unbearable on King's Highway East, you have no way to widen, what do you propose?
We, that is something that we have to address in the future, in my opinion, I think it would not.
From your past experience?
In my past experience with traffic, well, traffic lines in equilibrium, so, you know, making, making any substantial, you know, obviously, we don't want to widen, we want to keep the roadway, and things, we can't widen, but even if you could, you wouldn't want to. You know, we keep the roadway as it is, and if, if, if people have an issue getting to the site using King's Highway East, they'll, they'll connect with 35 and will remain there.
Do you want to go on their way? Do you want to go on King's Highway East? Do we go other places besides the mall?
No, I'm talking about things, something from the outside, that's a really a place, down King's Highway.
Nobody wants to go to the mall. So, yeah. I, I like it.
I don't, I can't, I can't give you an answer. We don't know what the, what the reality is, and our best estimates show that if the roadways will, will continue to operate as an unbearable service at the intersections, and that additional mitigation measures are applied. That's why, that's what we find, I mean, people have, are hoping to different things.
Okay, so, oh, you're up on the case, yeah. Thanks.
Jim Paulson, 27th, can I do one more?
Hello. Um, let's see, I have a question. Um, do you know what percent of traffic, let's see, comes from, that travels on King's Highway East now going west? What percent of traffic wants to get to the other side, you know, to go on King's Highway West, to go wherever, not, not to go back out through 35, but to go, you know?
To come up to Tindall Road and take the truck handles, is that where you're, the engine, you know, kind of, in the cross where you are?
Yeah, yeah, what percent of traffic is traveling there, well, you know, wants to cross to go to, you know, either church, to the train station, or Red Hill Road, to the parkway, you know?
I don't, I can't, I don't have the exact number, we did not conduct the origin destination study for this week, so I would be required to know exactly where people are going from point to point.
Okay. Um, my, one of my big concerns is that there's, you know, the traffic that wants to get from King's Highway East from, to this new mall, and then vice versa, along with the existing, the existing people who want to get to those areas, King's Highway East, King's Highway West, King's Highway East, it's all going to be related, so. If, in other words, if there's backups, if this is not built, and there are backups, people will, they will go through these, these neighborhoods, like, right, this, right now, everyone who travels down King's Highway East, heading west towards this new Village 35, right? Okay. Except for the stop laws who cut through the liver, Circus Liquors, to go on Twin Brooks, to take some routes. Okay, everyone else has to just make a right, and they have to go to that, that very old and outdated Tindall, very small, which I know, there's a proposal to make it bigger, but you're saying this won't happen anytime soon, the mall will happen first. So this will, this will become very backed up, and anyone in their right mind who's traveling on King's Highway, the new realigned King's Highway, which is now it's lining up the Twin Brooks, they're just going to travel straight across the road. Why would they make a right to wait several cycles? Plus, it's frustrating because you can't get, you just, it doesn't move sometimes because cars, it's very, it's very hard to get from here over to here. So there's going to be significant, everybody who wants to travel to the train station or the parkway, and that's everybody who wants to travel anywhere west, if you want to travel west, or if you want to travel north, that's more than just a few miles, or south, more than a few miles. In other words, there's a big demand to get to Red Hill Road to the parkway, that's the major thoroughfare in our area, other than Route 35. So, I just think that the township needs to study, study this aspect of it, and I, you know, you said you didn't study it, but you would if the township asked you.
There's, there's no questions. It was a long statement. The only question was, would you do it if the township asked you? The answer to that was?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Sorry. So, well, I'm just saying that, if you, people, it's very hard to just ask questions. You know, in some preface of your question with some statement, some fact, or opinion, okay, except for, you have to keep it to, yes, ask my question.
Okay, oh, um, did the new Twin Brooks intersection, is there also a right-hand turn lane, bypass intersection to make a right, or do you now have to go to the lane to make a right? Um, Twin Brooks, coming out of Twin Brooks from the neighborhood, if you want to make a right on Route 35?
In, in order to expand the truck handle to make it appropriate, design eliminated the bypass, right turn bypass.
I am, okay. Um, I'm going to try and answer this one. Questions, now, there's one more question, but, let's see. You said the DOT has approved the existing Village 35 infrastructure of all the points of egress and ingress? That the DOT has already approved that? The New, the New Jersey Department of Transportation has approved all of the designs for the infrastructure for the egress, you know, all the realigned roadways and the points of egress and ingress, that they have already approved that?
Yes.
Okay, so my question is, and I've studied every mall in the state, I've looked at Google Maps, I've traveled to many malls, every mall in the state, I've studied them, they have gone out of their way, it's very clear, to not impact neighborhoods. I don't mean roads that are thoroughfares that travel from one town to the next, but residential neighborhoods, pocket neighborhoods, okay? I have looked at every mall in the state, and they don't do this, they could have. I can't imagine that developers are just very benevolent and voluntarily decided to be good neighbors. There must be something in any DODT to mandate this, I don't know. So my question is, how can this new Village 35 be the only mall in the state that has multiple points of egress, ingress, that basically utilizes the infrastructure of existing pocket neighborhoods to build their mall? This is the cheapest way of doing it, how it's designed.
Mr. Cather, in front of you. Mr. Cather is hired by the township to try to be willing and cooperative witness and answer people's questions. You preface that by saying it's the only one.
Okay, there, there aren't, there aren't.
Well, I can't answer the question anyways, I'm not the DOT, I, I'm not privy to the design process that they went through with the applicant to finalize these designs, reasoning behind their decisions for approval, I, I'm just dealing with the fact that it was approved by the DOT.
And we all appreciate the fact that the township went through the effort, hired Mr. Cather, hired his firm, to do a study, to come up with a better solution. He works for the town, he's getting paid by the town. He came up with a plan that will, to a large extent, keep, at least not make the problem worse, and will ameliorate the problem of traffic congestion that might be anticipated from the developer. So this is a positive thing, and, you know, you're, not to say anyway attacking him, but you're grilling him as if he's sitting here representing the developer. He doesn't, he's here protecting the township's interests, he came up with something that in his opinion works, and that's the, that's the sum and substance of his testimony, and to go through and say, how many made a left-hand turn, and how many cars made this, and how many cars did that, is putting him under the same type of microscope that you might want to put Mr. Fankie under when he was here, but it's not productive to, it's not relevant to his ultimate testimony.
Okay, okay.
Feels like he works for the developer, not the township.
Well, and he does not work for the developer, he works for the town. The town specifically authorized, the county board made a point almost two years ago, saying they wanted their own independent traffic study done. The developer didn't want to pay for it, who made the developer pay for it for escrow. Mr. Cather's been involved in this for almost two years, this is what the end result is, something that looks like there's some way to ameliorate and make this better for everyone.
Except if you're not a neighbor.
Let me just finish, I was talking. So what's happening here is that you're attacking him as if he was the developer, and asking him thinking questions about how many people left, and how many people go to the train station, and how many people do this and do that, since he's trying to answer, rather than saying, oh my God, please stop. So he's being polite, right? He's a nice young man, he's a generous guy, he's very talented, he loved the plan, but you're sitting here and asking the same questions about, hey, he's not for that, he's, sorry to get a call, but he works for the office.
And you're not doing it yourself. I'm not blaming him, I'm playing.
And wait a second, wait, I said before, this isn't the Jerry Springer Show. You'll get a chance to come up here and ask questions.
I'll just ask a one more. Have you ever worked on traffic flows with other malls?
Yes, I've worked on both sides of it. In fact, we were the review engineer for a very large, for the New Jersey Turnpike Authority, on a very large planned mall development off of Better Change 125, it's a former national lead site, which was millions of square feet of.
That one?
Yes, millions of square feet of retail residences.
Okay, do you know if they're lining up any of their points of egress and ingress with existing pocket neighborhoods?
They, the, the, where the site is located, they are not in a residential area, so.
I understand, right. Because that's where you should build malls, not in residential areas. That's. I'm asking for you, you can take, this is a, a take-home assignment for everyone. Find another mall, find another mall in the state, okay, that has points of egress, ingress, which connects to pocket neighborhoods, not thoroughfares that go from one town to the next. I'm talking about neighborhoods that don't go anywhere, and that's what you've done, is leverage, 50% of the points of egress, ingress are just leveraging our neighborhood. The only recourse we're going to have is to invest thousands of dollars, we've lost actual lawsuits, if you need, we have hundreds of courts cutting through because you didn't, you weren't asked to study the cut throughs. Thank you.
She was back there, young lady.
So, I have a, well, I have, I have another question, sorry. Coming down from, how many cars coming down from King's Highway, Old King's Highway, that would benefit some of the neighborhood traffic? That would not be using.
Like I said, I don't have any trip, origin destination study, but I would imagine people are coming down King's, not Old King's Highway, making a right on the 35, going into the neighborhood, trying to get to the station or to the, to the parkway.
No, no, they're alleviating that, I mean, south.
Correct.
So probably cars for you, I'm letting that go across.
Oh, now you can continue, sure. We estimate about 250 vehicles to do that.
So, I, that's my question, I just, can I just say one question? Okay. So, I live at Conover Avenue, I am now, I'm a part of the newly formed Little Town Village and Sports District Superbowl Association. Big title. Our association has great concerns for Old King's Highway. As you know, Old King's Highway is part of the county village, and as such, is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. To preserve our history, we cannot let King's Highway become a major thoroughfare, which will cause one disaster, because of the light and the traffic. Traffic studies show the town, and this is weekends because I work normally, and don't really go out at peak, so it's going to go from 181 to 318 on weekends. We've already felt an increase in the traffic on King's Highway due to the Church Street traffic light, especially on the weekends, where artists guard the neighborhood to revert back to a little bit with no traffic on weekends, that is, and so now. For weekends, there's been no traffic study done on the side street, and this is very concerning. I'm going to go back to the Church Street traffic light, where there was no traffic study done for that light on the side street, and we're told that the traffic light would alleviate the traffic on Conover Avenue. I just want to show you a picture of through, and it's like, a little tale, the county board, that all the things are like, well, you know, those neighbors like to live, and some neighbors hang on. This is Conover Avenue in January, going up to King's Highway.
So, Mr. Jay, we're going to have this mark and.
Okay.
This is for questions. This is, this is, this area, you have questions of Mr. Cather?
So.
Here's a, there is.
I, I did that. I want to.
She did, she practiced it when she moved in that position.
No, it's not.
Well, is the board then at the end of the, of the public hearing process, then going over to the public for comment and testimony, and this may be more appropriate at that point?
It's out.
Exactly. What he's saying is we have to finish the process of questions.
So the one, the question is, why don't traffic studies study side streets? Is it that, that they don't want to be involved in them, because it's not in our scope, like, in general, or I see a question, you could warn on traffic studying. Do you think so, and some people might, are engineers, some people aren't, we're concerned with that.
The, again, I would say that, the, saying that we didn't look at side streets at all The, again, I would say that, saying that we didn't look at side streets at all is not true. We know the volume coming from the side street that's that major, that intersection approaches to the primary, to the study areas of 35 and Kings Highway, those two study areas. You know, typically, again, as I said, predicting pass or predicting cut-through traffic is not, is very difficult. It's not.
You think you have to stand, you have to have a person actually counting the traffic?
No, not just that, I mean, it's easy to get the, it's easy to get the existing data, but trying to estimate what changes in somebody's driving behavior that now says, "I'm going to cut through this neighborhood" rather than going on a major route to get there, especially when these improvements are being made to those major, major routes on 35. You know, what, what triggers that decision? That's something that's very difficult to, to project.
So are you considering that Holstein Highway is now going to be a thoroughfare? Is a way to get to the people?
It's, traffic is projected to use the, to use Kings Highway.
And there's no mediation, but there's a mediation for people who want to get on Kings Highway.
And if you want to see it like that, I mean, most of that volume is not additional volume. It's volume that right now is on Kings Highway, that makes the right, goes down, around the jug handle, comes backed up. We're just allowing them to go straight across. Sure, is it likely that we'll see trip distribution from other areas to come, a few extra vehicles? I don't know. We didn't, we don't have a larger origin destination study for the township to determine. And you would even need it for beyond the township in order to get an exact number of how many folks would choose to use that route instead. What we're trying to do is take the existing volume that we know is making these difficult movements, or circuitous movements, and give them a direct movement.
Has there ever been a study on how traffic can ruin a historic neighborhood?
I can't answer that question.
Not in your traffic world?
I'm not aware, I'm not aware of any study, you know, that I can speak to at the moment, no.
And one last question, because I just had this thought. So how long have you been testifying?
I've been testifying for the past eight years.
And you didn't know to bring people like a principal for work for them?
Every, every place testifies different, some for work.
But tell me about, like, each other rules, like, "Oh, you're not going to need a principal for work."
I'm not going to, I don't. I'm a professional engineer, you know, I brought a copy of, digital copies, made a printed copy. It's, you know, that's, that's, I have many questions.
Thank you.
My question is also regarding Twin Brooks. Can I, can you tell me the current traffic pattern as you come out of the liquor store? If you wanted to go on Twin Brooks?
Liquor store, if you wanted to go on.
Correct, what's that happen to do?
But I know that, I guess I'm not going to use the internet, we seem very very old. So, no, this is very old. We can see the store down there. So right, if you want to go to Twin Brook down there now, you, there's, there's the legal and the not-so-legal ways of doing it, so you can come out.
That's called legal entrance.
You can come out and.
Come out here?
Now, you can come out the, onto the jug handle and make the left and go down and, and, and circle the bad way.
Wait, to get on Twin Brook, to get here?
Yeah, you can't go straight across, I mean, there's no way currently to go straight across, the passenger has.
Right. So I think, I think, I think you've, if you wanted to, you could come out here and get into this lane and go left.
Well, this, this is not.
That's legal. That's legal to do. Right?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes. So you're not aware of that at this point? Because I want to know what the current traffic is that does that, and that current count, what that current count is, and then what your projected count is according to. So if you leave me now, it is, it is legal to come out here, get into this lane and go left. So I'm asking what those current counts were. And then I wanted to know what the projected counts were. Would you be putting a direct access in that?
I can't answer the question on the current counts because the driving movement count volumes at that intersection don't specify who's making what, who's making what movement. That's not, it's a driveway movement and not a road movement, so it wasn't counted.
A driveway?
Yes.
He doesn't know the answer.
I don't really answer.
Well, so there's no, so there's no current traffic. Can you say what you project to go down this Twin Brook? Was that done by anyone?
Yes. Hold on one second. We have a group volume from going across the intersection of 86 vehicles in the P M P L. And 41 vehicles in the Saturday P M P L. That's from our study, not from the local study.
Right, because I think the Langen study didn't have an existence on Saturday of five and a percentage of 97. Because that being an increase from five to 97 is an increase of 1,840%. I think it's important that we should be able to discuss that.
What do you want to say?
Well, I mean, I was asking what the count was. He didn't have it, I have it, so I think you, I wanted to ask them and have them say what the count is and what the increase was. So that the board would be aware, because if I ask the board, I don't know that they would be aware of that's the change. So I'm asking him to describe the change so that the board members are aware.
You're talking about 97 vehicles per hour in the P L, is that?
I showed that for Saturday, which is an increase of 1,840%. What I'm trying to get him to tell us, because I don't know, I mean, that's my interpretation.
You're reading that, that one Langen traffic impact study that spoke in particular.
But you agree with the Langen, you said it everything, reviewed everything, and I heard you say you agree with everything, is that right?
In general, we agree with that methodology. We made small minor adjustments where needed, but in general, their distribution and the trip generation should be deferred.
Right. So can you find another way to have people exit the shopping center that doesn't have a direct access to Twin Brook, which is, what's the speed limit on that?
25.
25. And when the residents park on the road, which they're allowed to do, then there's only one lane for cars. So is there a solution now to keep people, deter people from using that pocket neighborhood to get to the shopping center? Is what I think is important for the people that are there.
97 are coming to the shopping center.
That's the P M Saturday.
Yeah, whatever, whatever.
From five, from five to 97.
But there's no reason to go that way on this route.
It's a cut drill, it's a, you're creating a very desirable cut drill.
For people that are going to go where?
Spruce and Kings Highway.
He wasn't here. Let's look for back. Catherine reviewed their numbers. He didn't review their numbers, he reviewed their numbers. So you're asking him questions about their numbers. Mr. Penkey was here for a night. All those questions could have been, should have been, maybe were asked.
Well, they were, but we just feel like the second bite of the apple here.
Excuse me, excuse me. Whoa, whoa, he's talking. You're right. You want a second bite of the apple? That's true, but he's not the apple. And Mr. Penkey was the apple and he's gone, he doesn't have to testify anymore. So that's what I was saying before, excuse me. With that, you're asking him questions and getting into the, you know, the small details about the Penkey report. He's trying to answer as best as possible, but that's not the point of his testimony. The relevancy of his testimony is that there's a way to make it better. That's the point. And, and, and if you're asking questions about how many made a left-hand turn, it's like a riddle or something. I mean, it seems almost like it's, you're just asking questions that are not novel to get hold of in testimony, which is that there's a way to make it better.
How do you make sure for the people that live in the pockets of Twin Brook, Spruce, and those areas, how do you make it better for them? That's the question.
If you, if you offer it, we didn't study.
But you're creating access to that neighborhood. You're creating an access which doesn't exist to this degree, that's all.
I have, I have a respect to your opinion and the opinion of those that were here tonight about the passenger traffic. You know, moving forward, if that passenger traffic does become an issue, there's potential to evaluate other measures to make that route less attractive while we're improving, as we have recommended, making additional improvements to make the primary routes more attractive. If you're saying the roads are narrow and there's one lane for parking lines, that's going to deter people from coming to the vehicle, especially when the additional improvements come along.
Can you eliminate the direct access to Twin Brook and leave it that they would have to go through the jug handle the way they're doing now? Make it less attractive?
I mean, that would require the applicant to go back to D O T just to do some sort of turn restriction where they restrict the through movement and make everybody turn left or right. That's not for me to make that decision, so whether or not everybody wants to do that.
So the sure answer was no.
Well, you could recommend it in your review, right? If you wanted to.
I suppose that we could recommend it if we, if felt unnecessary, we could recommend it.
I think the residents would be upset, but yeah, that's, I appreciate it.
Well, I think everybody's hearing the opinion of the residents.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't exist, so why create it? Let them continue to go left, not straight. Where I would think the point I wanted to get across. Thank you.
Quick question. You, you mentioned that you had looked at the Route 35 from Harmony all the way down to Redmond area, and also the cross streets from Kings Highway East and Kings Highway West. My question is adding on to questions that were done earlier. Kings Highway East, the, the traffic that's going to, towards 35, somebody mentioned that they, there was a backup going in when somebody had to go into Circus Lakers. If you looked at, if you got slide 21, everybody knows the area. There's now going to be a road. There's going to be a road, if I have my roads correct here. This is Tyndall?
Yes.
And this is Kings Highway East?
Yes, that's the main track.
So there's going to be a road into the neighborhood, and right there, here, is a blind hill. Now, I've personally, you know, I live in this area, so I've personally gone into the, I've, when you go over that blind hill, and somebody's trying to turn into that farm, I nearly had an accident there. Because somebody couldn't make the turn into the farm, much less down to the Circus Lakers. Now, what we're going to have in the neighborhood where people are going to be trying to turn into and it's going to start backing up towards that blind hill. So the question is, what's the site distance there like? Did you guys study the effect of the backup to that blind hill? It's a 35 mile an hour zone, keeps its tempo at 40-45. It's just a matter of time before you have enough to back it up or you have to leave it on the hill. You cannot stop the amount of traffic that they are, or. So I don't know if you can add to the question, but look at that, that intersection there of the new neighborhood. Did you guys look at that with respect to the blind hill?
No, we did not do a site distance analysis of that traffic, or that entry point.
That's come up in discussions before, mostly talking about the destination going the other way and getting the blind hill. People talk about, you know, we have to build their lower the height and then the sidewalk all the way down the right side. But I, this, my question is coming over, we got, we've got certain situations where every day, local effects, it's not a per-hour problem. People mentioned that you have, you know, 350 cars per hour, but when you have a train station at the end, you've got 300 cars per hour. Same thing with the mom and dad trying to get back to school and drop the stuff, you know, stay back at their house. It's going to be queued up, maybe with a turn, a left turn into the residence, and it's going to happen frequently during the day, especially at school hours where you have people coming over there, they'll go past, and there's going to be an accident. So I would suggest that you take a look at that, I think there's room for a turning or passing lane. You could make that a left turn lane, it would help, but I would appreciate that if you look at that. Secondly, you mentioned, you mentioned an improvement for the, for Tyndall Road. You mentioned that the Woodland has not been like that because that was a builder mitigation. Tyndall Road also, is that, is that building mitigation or is that township doing that? To be clear, sorry, in fact, I wanted to ask a question. Tyndall would be the center. Okay, so same suggestion I had before. Could we get the Woodland Road spec to that degree of detail? Do we have Tyndall Road changed spec that? We might need both, and we should know at least what we're, what we're up against, that we do need both at the 75% mark. Could be very expensive. The Woodland Road turnaround, the jug handle.
We are doing a public access on Woodland Road.
Are you, are you asking for a concept for a new South Bend junction? Was that what you're asking for?
The big question coming in tonight was that there's nine entrances, more fair into the development, and there's one, still one entrance. We've got an extra lane, so a couple extra spaces to handle that traffic. You've got the Tyndall Road mitigation, and you've got the slightly bigger jug handle there. The original plan had two lanes in the jug handle. If you had to turn that down, it gets, it hurts. But right now, if that isn't enough, we're going to have to go to something else like the Woodland Road jug handle. And it doesn't require a benefit analysis, it's on the finance. You need the different options. What's the cost of the analysis? What if the building doesn't want to sell that deeply? What if the gas station owner, whoever wants that in the future, can you get that?
Let's try to put this in some perspective. How did you hire Mr. Catherine to come up with a way to make it better? He came up with a conclusion. The D O T didn't see it necessary in their review to require the improvements that Tyndall and Kings Highway West. They didn't, never would have looked. Yeah, forget it. They didn't think that the intersection right out here needed improvement. So the township is fighting very hard to get that done. His review is going to hopefully convince the DOT to do it, get the necessary permits. It's going to have to be designed, property will have to be acquired. All of those costs, construction costs, will then, the anticipation is that it's going to be funded from payments from the developer. Now, we can get into the old details, I mean, it's necessary. But basically, the developer's going to be funding those improvements after it's approved by DOT. The township is the one going to DOT, not the applicant. The applicant went there, DOT said, you don't have to do this. DOT said, your plan's fine. That's not good enough for the township and the township is going through extraordinary efforts to get something better done. So I think that is being lost and maybe not by you, sir, but the general public, that's being lost. And you're asking Mr. Catherine basically, why dump the wall? Why have traffic? Why have this? He's not here to answer those questions, sir, because then, Mr. Penkey was. His apple was bitten and gone. Mr., we prefer that you don't bite our own expert apple. I mean, just, he's here to try to help. And there's, well, I was in a, there was a, I was in the event of, why bother having come? It was going to get through this. I'm sorry, sir. Why, why they can go through this? Because the developer isn't required to do this. How did the planning board really say you have to do more improvements on a state highway when the state highway said, no, you don't? That's an impossible thing for this board to condition this approval of. So trying to come up with a way, for the way that makes this work. So Mr. Catherine is being subjected to somewhat irrelevant cross examination standards. I'm not saying to your question, sir, but in general, everyone's asking questions about small things when the big picture is, there's a way to make it better. And that's what his testimony is about. And, you know, frankly, you have the questions that are being asked. If I were to sit next to him, I'd be saying, whispering to him, saying, you don't know, you don't know, you don't know. Not something, not something that he studied, but he's trying to be helpful. So, you know, just please, everyone recognize that and you're beating him up as if he's the developer. That's not fair. Don't beat me up like I'm the developer because I've been here for 12 years beating up on developers and they can all tell you. And so is the board, you know, chairman for 25, Mr. Ratchell for his wall. So everyone's have to protect your interests and including Mr. Catherine.
We're helping the developments, it wasn't that. Everyone's been here and you're helping the developments.
In fairness, the concerns of people are. Getting Mr. Catherine with, or the rest of us, have fair questions for people that live on a specific street. But the board fully understands that. We can't address every single one of those things, but we do try to. So.
The third one adds one question. Catherine looked at Kings Highway and that one, it's not a matter of her. And to the other, we've got a way to make it better. It could be possible to have two ways to make it better. It's a hundred considerations. I was actually thinking with you.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 Mark. All right, cheer up.
Do you swear a sentence to me that you're about to get approved?
Martin Delaney wants to teach you about this. Mr. Catherine, did you, I'm trying to get a high end. Two things you should have just made with these questions. Did you look at as if they were meant a left turn only lane on 35, like all of them between site and the supermarket area there? That would be, they have a very long run to have like a left turn. Is that one of your charges?
No.
You did say that they already had designed the stormwater and everything. Did you feel that precluded? The reason why you could study that?
No, I was talking about the stormwater management for the stop and shop, holes, shopping center, not work there.
Right, in other words, because it sounds like, okay, you know, there's a piece of property that the board has or maybe the other way to solve it with the, they would have to give up. So you feed a front ditch and just make it a left turn only lane. I know you talk about expectations, you know, until we learn to stop expecting, jug handles will never, we learn to expect, you know, left turn lanes. And it's a big, it's a big wall, I'm sure that we signed, people will quickly learn to make a left. It just seems like if that wasn't considered, it should have been, in the sense that it's a good opportunity now to start training people to take left turns. It would have been obvious, it, you know, what's the difference that they give up a few feet along their whole front ditch to make 35 wider and make that left turn lane there? And then the one specific problem of access to the wall from South Town 35, that now you've stopped affecting what the outside neighborhood, you've stopped impacting that. So, and if that has to be a really long lane and people have to wait two or three lights, well, if they want to go to the wall that end, they'll have to be waiting. So that wasn't part of your study, was it? I mean, was there, you didn't feel it was worth studying or it didn't, it just, about the time it got to the point where you were analyzing it, it seemed too far gone?
I would say we did not look at that. I don't know what sort of alternatives that Mr. Penkey evaluated in his study. The goal was, you know, they have an approval from DOT. DOT told them what was necessary for us to go back and force that into something that DOT said wasn't necessary. It would be a large challenge. So we were looking at other options outside of the approvals that could be up to leaving some conditions.
So in that case, the developer just got to DOT faster and was able to get there satisfactorily?
No, I mean, I wouldn't say that. From my understanding, a very long, multi-year process with the DOT wasn't just a stamp of approval. So I can't speak to all this.
Second follow-up question, and it's all right if you come to me on that. I also have a concern about stormwater and whatnot. DOT remains filled roads, there's no required treatment or anything. It's just get the water off the road, is that true or false? Do you know that or is that not a traffic engineer issue or is that? You know, obviously it kind of crosses over from roads to environmental.
What I can say, I'm not a stormwater engineer, traffic engineer, town sign or purview, but there are stormwater management requirements.
Or roads. For the ramps. Okay, Ben.
We all think jug handles are a great, is there?
What do you take? Didn't hear me? I didn't hear you.
Oh, sorry, can you hear me?
Little bit better, thank you.
I'll repeat that. I was asking that some of the residents have required by making a left turn lane from South Town 35 into this development. But we're all kind of trained in Jersey with jug handles. Is there a statutory engineering reason why that there aren't? Like, is that even in the realm of possibility or is it like, there's no left turn lanes on state highways? And like, is that? No, I mean, there's definitely, of course, there's a mix of both vehicles and left turn lanes. I'm not personally aware of the top of my head to have any requirement from NJTUT about spacing or anything that allows you to put a left turn, you're not a left turn lane plus a roadway. So it does have roads with mixture. But again, it does also come down to operation of the main, of the main four doors as well, so.
We have a large one though, now in Monmouth Mall going south on 35, where it used to be the surplus, we did three left turn lanes.
There's one at the road.
Yeah, this was going to be just like the road.
One left hander.
In your effort to make things better, can you please recommend the blind hill on Kings Highway East between what will be Connect the Road and Heritage Drive, if you look at it more closely? It's a dangerous condition already. There's also a bus stop right there and it's just the out or something like that. So do you have power to make any recommendations? Please look at that, I mean, maybe that wasn't for a good study, but if you could just, please, look at it. It's not good. When you drive down it, any given day, you'll see how bad it is. If there's any way in your efforts to make things better, that possibly be part of it, we'd greatly appreciate it. I know a lot of us that live in that neighborhood. And then just one last question. In your study of going Kings Highway East, did you include mall traffic as well as residential? Because you had said that there wasn't going to be much volume to really bring the station to the road.
Yeah, it's the total trucks generated by both the retail and the residential.
Because although it's maybe not significant enough to actually do something about that, it is going to be an increase in volume, which again goes back to that blind hill, which is already a dangerous condition. So anything that can be done to that, or just looked at even by you or going back to the developers, anything that needs to be done and addressed? Maybe it's too late beginning for that, but I think a recommendation should have was to be considered, so. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your wonderful study. I know there's a lot of working to be done to it. I also know that some people say there's a lot of scientific behind that spacing.
Can we just talk about my whole?
Yeah, we can't hear you.
Sorry. I wanted to thank him and say I understand that there's a lot of scientific behind that spacing because of these. Thank you. A couple of additional pieces of information for you. I don't know if you have enough information with the Catholic studies.
Really good, you know, one of them.
I'm sorry.
You can pull it out.
Okay. Is this better?
Yes.
There are a couple of questions about the traffic studies and some information. Today from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. of all on Kings Highway, I counted 680 cars and 132 trucks. I love that group. On Kings Highway. That's pretty heavy for a wall. A question regarding the plan that you proposed here. You said that you had considered a jug handle here. This part of this, this parking area here, because it's full, doesn't always work. Doesn't allow a lot of parking area to be used, but it seems like you're shifting the road this way. The biggest problem with being at those residents in Kings Highway is when you come up this direction and try to get this way, we are totally dependent on courtesy of people traveling this way to average across here. I don't see how this addresses that situation. It increases the queuing rates, which is a good thing because we're not down on the grid. Have you considered asking that there be a queuing lane here? Rather than extending this direction? Would that one be considered?
We looked at a variety of options for that jug handle. Mainly, the reason for the shift is to get it further away from the main intersection so that we're able to accommodate more vehicles. Because right now, the difference is that it's a very limited weaving area right now and the vehicles easily queue from Tyndall Road that would go south back and block your ability to come onto Kings Highway. So by extending that back and providing a second left turn lane, we're shortening the queue. So now those left turns from the jug handle onto, to go towards Kings Highway are now behind the queue and not within the queue. So it should make it easier for you to make the left turn out onto, to continue Kings Highway.
I guess I was wondering if, my suspect is there might be a possibility of two solutions where you have a jug handle here. I don't know how many covers the queue there, but most of the time it seems to be like five or six. Is it not sufficient to get around to being all this way?
The, can I speak to the jug handle on that side? We did have initial, we did analyze the jug handle, but when we went to look at it geometrically, to me, current in the DOT standards, the jug handle.
You couldn't get the radius now?
I could, the radius had to be significantly larger than what we see, maybe not many jug handles today because the standards have changed. It would actually clip this corner of the building, a standard sized jug handle would clip that. So it's a very significant jug handle.
Which makes no sense given the traffic conditions for that direction.
I would agree, it comes down more to the updated design standards for the radii of the jug handles and necessarily based on just the volume.
When you give the.
You're going to have to be closer, you're going to be closer to the microphone. Sorry, that way you can, the microphone will follow you.
When you did the analyses, forgive this old engineer, but did you look at the variation in traffic? Because that creates a great impact on queuing. We see huge variation in arrival rates in this area. We can't say, you know, there's so many cars a minute or so many cars an hour. We might have 600 cars an hour, but we have 60 cars a minute type of arrival rates at that times, as we mentioned. I'm curious as to what variation you used in your simulations. Do you recall or is that something that is canned in?
When we do a traffic analysis, you use something called a peak hour factor, which accounts for how vehicles are arriving over that one hour period. So if you had a peak hour factor of one, basically it's even a while that's around the peak hour. And as the peak hour factor is reduced, it makes more, it makes the peak within the hour more significant. And, you know, more traffic arriving in a shorter timeframe than being distributed evenly throughout the hour. So when we collect turn unit count data, we're able to calculate the peak hour factor to get that variable. And the simulation will show that, you know, you see the queue get longer or then it gets shorter, then it gets longer again, then it gets shorter again, and it does vary in the simulation.
I was curious about that because that's what we used to see in 11, when average call volume is not in service, you have handles, handle the people. We're dealing with the same kind of situation. I just wanted to point out for your benefit and for the board's benefit that we do have significant problems with traffic boats already existing in the neighborhoods, in the residential neighborhoods. On Kings Highway here, Mark, that we've almost lost two cars in front of our property because of impatient drivers hitting us while we were. because of impatient drivers hitting us while we were digging into our own property. Bill was running by a car at New Madison Road crossing a crosswalk. So we really have to talk on the, how much traffic is going through. And I pass this one. So, just keep that in consideration, because I appreciate it. And I know we're all, every single one of us, you know, the custodians of this treasure we have called the village.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Judy, J D Y, last name U S N, U S A. I live on 114 King's Highway. I'm one of historic homes. I'm part of the newly formed Middletown Historic District Neighborhood Association. And the questions that I have actually relate to traffic related to public safety. Because for all of us, it's our families and our children that we're worried about. And there are things that you can and can't do. We understand that. So, tonight, some of the things that I wanted to quickly ask is, with regard to truck traffic, we talked about that, you talked about that, there would be an increase, and Chris just talked about the numbers just this afternoon. So, did you realize that trucks cannot use Laurel Avenue, which is really a quarter of Homedale, because of the train trestle? And so therefore, where do they go? What road are they using? They're basically cutting through and they're using King's Highway. Did you know that ShopRite, the owners on Sunday afternoon, because I was behind an 18-wheeler that pulled into ShopRite, you know that the 18-wheeler also uses King's Highway? Why? Why would the 18-wheeler? Route 35 is such a great road, right? Maybe you would think that they would take that one. So to your point, you said you really can't control where people go? You can't control come-through? You can't control driver behavior? Is that correct? It's sort of like a lump gas? Very much. So, what are the things that, this word should recommend to mitigate truck travel? I'm talking semis and, I mean, literally 18-wheelers, probably no road that you can't sit under. We're trying to have a conversation. And construction vehicles and these huge trucks that are coming through. And, you know, off of a street like King's Highway, that was clearly never intended for that kind of traffic. What is it that we as residents, as the board, can do that are calming effects? What are the process to do that? What are the options?
I think that, you know, looking at it, every case is different. What we want to do is we want to make the King's Highway less attractive to those truck vehicles. So, I don't know, the amount of area of the jurisdiction, King's Highway, section of King's Highway, were one of the things that a lot of communities do, truck restrictions on these roadways to prevent larger trucks from utilizing the roadway as a first step. As a second step, you can make geometric changes through striping, through curbing, to make it more difficult for those trucks to move. But ultimately, you need to first restrict, have a restriction before you can do anything else. Because if there's no restriction, you're just gonna get trucks that are stuffed, and you don't want that either, so.
Certainly. We just want them to be directed on Route 35 rather than using a historic road, where the roadbed and the noise and actually the vibrations from those trucks on old houses actually has a negative effect that makes it even harder for us to maintain them. Because of course, we're a little closer to the road than some newer homes, I think. And literally, the windows are shaking when they go by. It's like having an earthquake pass your house. So, you know, those are the kinds of issues from that perspective. And that's the thing is to protect, to try to preserve the integrity. And, you know, we put a lot of time and attention in. So, what is it that we can do? So, we could be asking for, during this whole process, to ask for some restrictions in some format. Can you restrict truck traffic? If so, what do you need to do to have that happen? What would we have to do as a community to come together and ask for those kind of restrictions? Is it a speed restriction? A weight restriction?
It would be a weight restriction.
Okay. So basically, force the hand. Because clearly, you know, I was looking at this plan. You're making recommendations for Temple Road, which is beyond the requirements of the D O T. So clearly, the D O T's bars and create aren't low. So, anything we can do is only in a perfect above that. What other improvements will be made to King's Highway, given how much truck traffic and other traffic is intended to come through there in terms of sidewalks and crosswalks? There are six sections of King's Highway that do not have sidewalks whatsoever. So, in fact, if you are a walker and you'd like to take the train to New York City, to Manhattan, and commute, which is what many of us do, how does one get there? Walk along a sidewalk on one side of King's Highway. How do you get to the train station? Do you know what roads there are that you could walk home to get to King's Highway?
That's beyond the scope of the D O T.
That's beyond the scope of the D O T? Because your traffic study doesn't incorporate what happens with pedestrians just as far as?
Well, he didn't do the traffic study. Mr. Capper reviewed the traffic study, and that was prepared by the developer.
So the developer was required to do anything to do with streets and crosswalks at all?
The two... What's your impression of King's Highway here? Like, do you look here and you're all treated? If they're working on it, that's not part of the...
It's all part of the occupation, but the point is, is the, I guess, the reason I'm asking the question is an indirect circumstance and consequence of this huge development being put in. And the consequence is going to be more of a, the people living in the communities surrounding the mall. While it's not directly on the mall's physical space, we all have to bear the brunt of the outcome of that, which is the additional car traffic. Okay, fine. You're gonna make improvements to the roadway. What about the people who are walking along the sidewalks? What about the children who now have to, where are they gonna walk? To school? We don't get busing, right? So what was my option? So if I live within two miles of school, I get to walk, and Village School is on King's Highway. Is that not a fair assumption that we're asking for when a developer puts in a major construction like this? That the contiguous roads that lead to it should also be addressed in terms of crosswalks, sidewalks, speed limit restrictions and other ways to mitigate traffic and be safe for pedestrians and the families that live there? Is that asking too much of the developer?
Yes.
Is asking too much of the developer?
Yes.
In this town, it is. Not everywhere else. Responsible for. What you're addressing is a problem with the laws of New Jersey. That's where you want to take this, all right? Griefly, a hundred percent. Because all the things we're talking about, our hands are tied to what we can ask the developer to. And to ask the developer, who's down, if they are down 35, to deal with King's Highway, and especially up in, I guess it's all the syrup. What I review is, what I consider the syrup section. It's gotta be a mile and a half.
So basically, you're saying the taxpayer gets the brunt of everything, including the cost, the noise pollution, and the traffic, and everything else is basically too bad for us? I mean, I'm just, I understand. It's not, I'm just, that's for the record. Basically, the developer can develop whatever they want, as long as they meet those zoning requirements. And everybody outside of that, not my problem. It's another sidewalk, not my problem.
We asked for a sidewalk, we put it on King's Highway where the light is. And the county government said they didn't want to take one of the...
Yes, I know. They've got a sidewalk that leads to nowhere. They've got an A E compliance.
We understand where you're coming from.
The other thing I want to also add, when we talk about sidewalks, you, the taxpayer doesn't pay for sidewalks. When we have applications, and if they don't, you know, if that's a common application, there is no need for sidewalks, then they're still supposed to come, be able to sidewalk fight. The township would install sidewalks. Now, I don't know what the situation is with King's Highway. I'm not familiar with it, but there is, I'm not familiar with it. But there are, of course, there's, of course, there's obstacles. And there's such improvements. Now, the question about trucks or speed limits. It's a little, it's a little jurisdiction of the township to have speed limits. Regarding truck traffic, wait, you can have a, the traffic is a wait restriction. So, there are ways to mitigate. What everybody's trying to say here, that applicants, applicants respond to the wait if, for, if the site, through the government and lab or whatever, we have, by means of resources, to do additional improvements. And the towns are actually taking steps. We have a meeting that's been with D O T. So, the town is taking care of themselves and going beyond what is required. With this mechanism, that's a battle to ask, to do that and mitigate the situation of rate to whatever extent we can. Just so that, you know, and your concern, they said, I drive to work every day, and I get off of there, and I walk and drive. And so, I know what you're talking about. There are kids who are walking, they're crossing, absolutely, but, you know.
You know, it's scary when you have to have two crossing yards at the same intersection, two, to cross two kids. Dangerous. So, then, the question about sidewalks would be something separate that we can talk about. Because I know that a police officer stopped one of my friends as he was going to take a train, because he said, "No, you can't cross here, because there's no crosswalk." But there is no crosswalk to actually get to the train station that actually leads to a place that you can walk from King's Highway, literally. There's no way you get there by foot. Unless you're, you know, on a plane ticket, but, you know.
There are other resources to examine these issues, you know, to work with them to transit data, site access folks, and there's safer routes to schools and other ways of getting funding and getting a sense of group interest.
And then, the town was seeking funding, actually, for, you know, spaces, who's, the identity of, of, you know, the right side projects, waiting for the city on that. So, you know, this is more beyond the, or beyond the, before township, you know, issue. And, you know, the, you know, the, you know, direction that person...
Great. Thank you very much.
Bart Sullivan.
Bart.
Bart Sullivan. I live at 46 Brandyman Way in Middletown. I just have a couple of quick questions. In the methodology portion of the report, it mentioned that in order to calibrate the traffic study, that we should watch out, and that during Saturday peak hours, there was no significant delay witnessed when you went out. And that the average speeds of the vehicles on the highway was less than 40 miles per hour. So my question is, what's the benchmark for measuring significance of a delay for body traffic?
Well, what we will look for in our travel time runs and measurements are too. When you have to, when you have multiple lights and there's multiple cycles that you're sitting through, and we're progressive, green, and you'll see that, we'll have longer queues that make it difficult to receive within the cycle. That's really what we're, what we're looking at, is how easy is, do you have to stop at a traffic light? That doesn't make congestion, but in what we're looking at, have a calendar, we're looking for queuing that's due to lack of propensity that results in vehicles having to read multiple cycles to get through intersections.
Okay, so basically, it's acceptable if you're stopping at every single light as you go down Route 35, from Homedale to Red Hill, for instance?
Well, is it acceptable? I mean, that's a big old question. But that's more of a traffic signal coordination issue than it is...
Well, I understand that when you make a faulty statement, then there's not a significant... What's the measure of that significance? So, you know, from my perspective, living in this area for many years, we've had a four-lane highway, past, I don't know, 40, 50 years at least. And the traffic is completely different, so I think that sub-40 miles per hour, 50 miles per hour road is... The other question I had was about the mitigation suggestions that you made in the report. I understand that there were some measures that were not really possible, not feasible, and you suggested other ones, but in any case, that it's not going to improve the current traffic condition that we have along the car, is that correct?
No, I, in my opinion, it does improve on the existing traffic condition. The queue spillback that we see from Temple Road exists today, and it provided this improvement would eliminate that queue spillback even with the additional traffic and other development-related traffic.
Well, right in this vicinity, but just down the road at Oak Hill, it said that there's no practical way to solve the issue that's going to be generated by this development there.
No, that's not what I'm saying. The development actually at Oak Hill Road, Chapel Road, is not the reason for those issues. Those issues are significant. They exist today. What my message in the report was regarding that was that there was nothing that the township, through the redevelopment agreement plan, had the ability to do, to address that intersection. An intersection, there's a lot of issues with that intersection outside of the traffic generated by Route 35. And it's, and my recommendation would be to bring it up to D O T and have them pursue it further. It's, you're gonna require that, you know, major significant improvements at the intersection. That's going to require right-of-way acquisitions, most likely of very high-value parcels.
Okay, so this development doesn't impact that condition? Is that correct?
No, as you get away from the site, you have some traffic dispersion as people are going to their homes and they're going on other routes. And when you're getting, as you're getting to Oak Hill, the volume there, I don't have the number right in front of me, but what we want to look at, when we look at site-generated impacts away, a significant distance away from the site, which this is, you're looking at what is the percentage that the site traffic makes up of the total traffic generation? And when you get farther away from the site, I do these all the time, you get further and further away, the site might be down to 1% or 2% of the total intersection traffic that's being generated by even the development of this size. I don't know that that number is off the top of my head, but I'm saying that it would not be, and the D O T has obviously shown, that it would not be on their, it's not their purview to fix the Oak Hill Road intersection. That's it. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Jeff Kudravich. K A N D R A, please, in victory. My question and concerns is in relation to my neighborhood, which I have not yet heard addressed at all. I live with some people, part of Vista, a nappy neighborhood. You know, there's the trail, a nappy trail directly across from John Crocat and Pascana. I'm down in that neighborhood. So I'm on the same side as Laurel Bed, between Laurel Bed and Church. Close to Church. My questions and concerns, I could attest to, you know, windows rattling, being awakened already by actual traffic and trucks. We're having a hard time already since the light was put in at church, coming out to make a left. And tonight, coming here out of my neighborhood, if somebody wasn't nice, I assume they were not from New Jersey, they... And I'm a white, home, New Jersey resident, so... They made me on so I could come out of my neighborhood, make a left, to come down here. Me encounter that a lot. It's also tough to get out to the right. We've got people, once that link turns green, if they're coming from 35. Now they want to gas it to get Red Hill. It almost runs over many of us. So my concerns with everyone being incentivized to come down King's Highway, it's gonna increase all that. I just want to make it more aware, especially with the D O T meeting upcoming. And also, perhaps you had any thoughts on that? If that had been looked at, how already we've got it queuing up past the trail. So we have a hard time coming out, either way, and getting in, and it's only been... So we have a hard time coming out either way and getting in, and it's only going to get worse. It was addressed earlier, brought up earlier about issues at Morley Pit. Morley Pit is down from me, so imagine what we're experiencing. You know, my whole neighborhood hasn't been addressed and I haven't heard it addressed and it's a complete concern to myself and all my neighbors and I think we're in a negative mood. But if you have anything to say, please leave it in the comments.
Well, I mean, we didn't go into that level of detail in terms of, you know, this, the local neighborhood street intersections and what we can do to assist folks getting in and out, again, in the direction of the township. That's something I'd be looking at and, but that's not major.
Well, again, thank you. I feel like it was important to bring that up, especially in the upcoming DOT. So, thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, please start continuing your conversation with the neighborhood. Please take your seat. Mr. Chairman, but after your simulations, did you do any stress tests? The numbers went into the simulation.
What do you mean by stress test?
If you put in the numbers that you were given, did you put in larger numbers in different areas to see when these intersections would collapse or add to the path?
No, we, we had additional volume greater than what was in the lane study because of the additional plane developments and the back of the road rate that we continue. And so I would feel that our, our numbers are very conservative in terms of being on the higher side. But we did not test, you know, we get, you know, 50% on this road versus 35% on that road. There was not a sensitivity analysis conducted.
Okay, so if any of the numbers are off, about 35%, you would know whether these performers would collapse or? A question on the DOT, when they come into a site plan like this, how far will the DOT move up and down the roads to see if the intersections are impacted?
It's, it's related to the number of trips generated by the site. The DOT did ask them to look at from Harmon Road down to Pine Street, past Oak Hill Road as part of an additional analysis, just to expand it out. But it's, usually what happens is you have a development, you go in for what we call pre-application meeting, you come in with your trip generation numbers, and what you think the study area should be, then they take a look at it and they concur, they add intersection to technical intersection depending on what they know is going on in the area.
Was this intersection, did they have any comment on that intersection?
I can't answer that question. I don't, I'm not, I don't have the, I'm not perfect in the exact interaction that they have with the team. They did this intersection requirement, Kingside and Tyndall, that was included in the study. I can't speak any further than what their decision process was and what was required and not required for.
Kings Highway East, they have, you know, the officers are proposing, you know, other intersections there, especially the one that's came on the hill for, you know, traffic engineering point of view. Do you think that's a good idea?
Like I said, I haven't personally evaluated this like distance at that location, so I can't comment on that. That's something that we'll look at.
Has somebody commented on the plan for the township? Should you comment on that?
I mean, as, as an independent traffic engineer for the, looking at the project, I'm evaluating what was submitted and coming up with recommendations. I mean, it's, it's impossible to come up with every potential issue that might be on every side street. That's why we're here, we're here to listen to you and get your feedback and, you know, the township wishes to explore that slight distance issue. That's certainly something that seems that I would, that we would do.
If that's possible for the township to do, back to you now, do that?
I wouldn't see why not.
Likewise, Kings Highway East, where the, as you head east and get to the military road and the crossroad, there, there's multiple cycles on that, those lights. Did you look at any of that or should you have looked at that?
That intersection was included in our analysis and we found that we did not require any additional mitigation measures at that intersection.
Or those intersections that you think of as individual intersections? Or the traffic cycles that are in the light trying to pass that?
Timing phasing? Yeah, we didn't see, we didn't recommend any adjustments to that currently. That's something, so timing phasing is relatively, I'll say relatively easy to address and, you know, if it does become an issue in the future, that's something the township will do.
T and M did, did look at that, Mr. Chairman, the board engineer did through the plan. So some of these questions that you're being asked, the town is here, did we get?
Okay. Thank you.
Has there been any discussions with the county, DOT, county regarding traffic mitigation issues like perhaps a traffic light at New Mama?
We had, no, it's out to the county. I don't know if the applicant, what applicant's interaction with the county is.
So there's been no discussion with the county DOT, to your knowledge?
No, not from, not from my perspective, but it may have been from the applicant's side of that.
Now, is, was the client, your client a town committee or the town planning board? I was a little confused.
Town board.
I'm sorry?
Town board.
Town board?
It's a planning board question.
And so the planning board dictated the scope of the review?
We scoped it out based on their RFP, the initial study, and then through the study process, you know, the study got refined, the focus shifted. That's typical of these types of studies.
I was just wondering who?
We're taking all the direction from the engine.
Now, here's a specific question. When on your SIM analysis, did you account, you said you accounted for some future developments? Did that include moving and enlarging the ShopRite to the east side of King's Highway?
That wasn't, that?
So you, you mentioned that, I'm sorry, that you posed future developments that were included, but that was?
At that point, ShopRite is a very recent, ShopRite is not even, not even in progress. It's still a process happening, but at that time, when we studied, ShopRite was not even a concept in the world at all. At that time, the investors' bank was a poopy and it's functionally bound. At that time, so touch, all the, there was a vacant Sears and Sears Auto Center, so. But we did, I guess, I think when we asked, and what I mentioned was that we did give him a list of everything that has been, has been proposed in, in the, on that corridor and also of the phone of that, one product, I think the summit or something that even they withdrew their application. We had a resolution of that garden center and very recently found that they were probably in the market. So also what we said to, what Adam said and what I'm repeating is that that's why there's a quote that they take into consideration.
I, I understand that. I was just thinking that the very enlarged future ShopRite at the other end of King's Highway, considering your, your scope of review is for traffic mitigation, you know, certainly took it into account. Did the more compact footprints of the barbed lung township offices for the new town hall complex, did that figure into your numbers as well?
No, that was not known until we were doing the.
So the, the $60 million compact's?
Increased.
Complex was not included in your traffic counts?
The answer was not in the camera.
I'm just trying to determine if his, his numbers or his mitigation, because this is about mitigation, isn't it?
He said no, the answer was not. Didn't concern.
Thank you very much for the answer. And, you know, I, I understood you guys are going the extra, the township is going the extra mile to meet with the DOT and bring all these things up. I, excuse me, but I thought that was part of the town's government's job is to help township residents. You've spoken of going the extra mile to meet with them, and I find that somewhat disident and useless. That's all I have to say.
I think if one question, maybe you addressed it in your presentation, I might have missed it, about the island, W. B. Duval, S. D. P. Harris and all. Would you take any of that into consideration in traffic or even out of there? Because it's quite hazardous.
That was one of the, we did discuss it briefly, we're talking about this proposed, the need for some additional improvements here to cut through traffic, who know. Obviously, in an ideal world, you would not have these center parcels. They're certainly not, from a traffic scene, they're certainly not optimal, but it's what we have and so the study did not look at things like closing driveways or anything like that. What we want to do is try to reduce the likelihood that people are going to cut through these to get back to Tyndall Road, but other than that, there's.
Yeah, it's kind of, you can just cut them, which is, and basically into, you know, the fast plane on both sides. And when you take it, especially on it going north, by north, you can't see cars coming around because it's kind of a big road, so you kind of take your, you know, your length on your own edge. Even if you're just going straight up 35 and not cutting across Tyndall.
Yeah, I mean, if you didn't look at addressing those or closing driveways, that'd be a very complicated process to quickly get access to a parcel and likely require DOT involvement. I would speculate that they probably would not, probably not pursue that.
All right, we have a question, just about, I'm wondering with all this increased traffic and all flow of the week, yeah, right there, they come in, they're both exiting to get to emergency.
That's beyond, that's beyond personal. He didn't, he didn't talk about who's emergency response. That's beyond.
Okay, thank you. I have another question.
Is there anyone else?
My name is Ollie D'Achenco and I live on King's Highway. And I do have to tell you, since I'm here, but what we're feeling has been very interesting since the light has gone in on Church Street. I'm further down Kingside, closer to the police station, and I have a hard time getting out of my driveway now. And I know that it's even worse further up. I think that, I would like to know if it's possible for you to do a further examination and further count of what's going on in our neighborhoods? Because now you're hearing from all of us that are in neighborhoods and saying, well, how come the counts weren't, weren't really done like? The light at Church Street has had a major impact. And I do believe that what's going to happen once Taylor Lane comes online, that they will be exiting onto King's Highway from, was it Apple Tree I think it is?
Cherry Tree.
From Cherry Tree onto King's Highway. So I think that there's going to be a whole bunch of extra stuff that's going to be going on that may not have been considered. It was interesting to hear Chris's numbers, one hour, 650 vehicles on King's Highway. And that's our reality. And so I'm not really sure when the numbers were taken, but I think that it would be really very interesting to see what the new numbers are. And I'd love to know if we can ask that our neighborhood's counts, if they could be studying. Reason being is then it would be fuel or a reason to think about, are there creative solutions and creative ways, I think that Monica mentioned one, that, that one could discourage people from coming onto King's Highway? Because it's going to be a speedway. I mean, if, if we've got new ShopRite at the north end of King's Highway, and then we have on Tyndall Road and, and then mall, and then the train station in between. So I'm just kind of curious. If you can think of a creative way, I know you've already been thinking about this like day, but if you can think of a way to keep all the traffic on 35 and out of our neighborhoods? Comment. Thank you.
Let me ask you this. You mentioned the traffic light at Church Street is making things worse.
Worse, worse, worse.
She's treating it as church. But there's less accidents, or you can raise the parking, since they placed a light there. They had a lot, very, very bad accident, escalating this on the right side. How many times did it go up to?
How long has the light been up?
I think, I guess, under a year.
Yeah, it has been under a year. I can tell you that everyone I know that lives on King's Highway, that were all experiencing the problems that we didn't have before the light.
This is just helping Church Street clear routes, what a mission.
So are we, so am I. I have no idea why the traffic shouldn't increase. In fact, I thought, they put the, put a light in, well, geez, that might make it easier for me to get out of my driveway then it's time for me to get out. It's crazy. I don't know why there is more traffic. I don't know if people feel that it's easier to drive on King's Highway now if there's a light. I'm not really sure what the logic is, but I can tell you, it has escalated. And also, what's also interesting, and I know that this is not, has nothing to do with you, is that we are now having water issues and flooding issues. Because I think that light, they converted a lot of, you guys would know, the water or something. So now, I live in a key historic home, and the home next to me is a little schoolhouse, key historic, once it rains, we've got water up on our, our lawn, coming up to our house. I mean, this is, this is unintended consequences. So, just let you know.
Might I follow?
There's another follow up in front of me. Just trying to get everybody who has, anybody else that has a metal, that are, this.
Is there any way that there's going to be, you know, it's just something that's a concern all of a sudden, it's like, if you're going to have cars backing up here, and there's no left turn lane, would anybody make a right on either side to utilize any of these two pad sites to maybe cut through there, to get on this Tindall Road, um, to mitigation? Does anybody think about that at all?
Would they be cutting through the station?
Exactly. Like, I, I was at a meeting for the Garden Center Island, and there was a very clever way where they turned the parking lot into angles to make it difficult to cut through. And I hope that was really quite smart, because right now, you can just drive through there, and the full policeman has to wait there all day and, you know, bother everybody to try to cut through. But it was interesting, there was like thirty-some odd parking spaces, and they designed it so it was very difficult to cut through. So I was thinking about it, that if you're going to have two pad sites there, um, you know, is it going to be easy to cut through to Kings Highway if you make a way on thirty-five through the town hall's parking lot?
I think I've got some type of signing here, uh...
I don't think I have. I, that is, actually, we talked about that, and that's not being did. Uh, the two pad sites, they're involved in thirty-five, they're not going to, they will not be able to cut through the, through the parking lot, especially, we have that, so our parking is going to be on the other side. So, um, to answer the question, yeah.
Okay, so nobody will be able, like, let's say it's a, I don't know, Dunkin' Donuts you know, if it is, let's say, nobody can utilize that and drive a stoplight.
I don't know, I think it would be the, the station that...
Right? I just wasn't sure.
I mean, that would be very...
You know what I'm saying? Like, is it... Yeah. So you don't think there's any direct way to make a right angle?
And, and I think, you know, um, for the, in, uh, in the, um, mall, um, every, we had, um, the, I think, I was there.
You was there?
I was there.
But I was at the workshop meeting where I think, I was in this, you were there for a little while, um, where the, 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 the sites were said to remain exactly as they were, and I think, and you mentioned, that that one will no longer be there in the front. That's why I came up with this theory.
I don't believe the one that goes to the town hall, I don't know, I, I haven't checked, I don't know.
Okay, like, it's, I, I think, it's just seeing like it would cost a little bit to do one, I, I...
So I keep shopping at the Tindall Road, and I keep questioning the benefit for it, and I realize that there's going to be two hundred and fifty less cars, and there's going to be a hundred and eighty-one more cars on Kings Highway. This is going to be an easy access for people to leave the shopping center, to get onto Kings Highway, but go then on the parkway. Would that make sense? If I was, if I'm taking the parkway, why would I want to go on thirty-five? And I don't really have one, I mean, why wouldn't I cut through, why won't I take that wonderful new jug handle, because they're compounding cars, and I will back up there by, so it's really promoting traffic on Kings Highway to get to the parkway.
I don't see it as a promotional traffic, I don't see it as addressing, uh, of course, with any roadway improvement, there's always some benefits and some disadvantages, so certainly something that could be looked at in the future.
Would you think my, my GPS would take me that way?
It would do it now, I mean, I come down and...
Well, I know, I'm at the, I'm at the shopping center, I'm one of many shoppers who came from, so, um, but, um, what is the take mean for it? Do you want to take me up to thirty-five?
It depends on where you're coming, I mean, if you're going to, okay, I know, I can take you back, but I don't have a, a, a...
To go north to Cherry Tree.
Some of your GPS has that traffic and conditions, and sometimes they will cut you, take the red hill.
It just seems to me that there's like no...
It's possible, without these improvements, it would, it could directly do that way.
But I thought, like, when I first heard about this interaction, I thought, King's Highway was going to give the angle left on thirty-five, so we're still going to have to do that. We're still going to have to do that. The truck works jug handle to go to the dock.
Yes, yes.
So there's no benefit for us looking at the entire way to this.
Did you go to Burger?
Well, I'm... No, I'm fine, I gotta get to the line. But it just seems that it's very, um, it'll make traffic, so onto Kings Highway. And as everybody stated, and we found out, I think, that Kings Highway is going to be greatly, greatly, greatly affected by all this traffic. The traffic light, you were questioning, why the traffic light is going to have so much traffic? My father died in that, when coming out of Kings Highway. He was driving, making a left, and the people coming to try to get back green light go so fast that they're right upon him. I, I get it every day, and you don't realize it because always they're able to take a left there, and there hasn't been this traffic. So weekends, the traffic has dramatically increased because of that traffic light. I think it might be held, like holding patterns, it just holds the traffic, lets it go both ways. This morning, I had to go, and I never really travel that way in the mornings, because I was just going on the parkway. This morning took me two lights to get up to Kings Highway, at eight o'clock.
To make the left to the church?
No, to go straight. Two.
And then towards Marden?
Down to the side of it, from Promis Street.
It should go straight.
Go straight. Two lights. So with that much traveling, that's increased, just because of that traffic light. And now, with this increase, a hundred and eighty-one on the weekend, is more than four hours. I just want you to notice the whole picture of what it's going to happen. And the difference is, can I just have my double in the, on the, going, I'm getting to Kings Highway?
I used to have a very strict, uh, we made some book references.
You know, you talk, you say it's red, and that doesn't matter.
Well, now, it's different.
Thank you.
I'd like, Judy knew so long ago, Kings Highway, I'd like to ask the developer to make sure that his website, his directions, his Google Analytics, his SEO, all points to using the roadways that we want, because, right now, everyone relies on Google in their smartphone. And so I take you where it's convenient. Ways took me the roundabout way to get to Freehold the other day instead of the regular way, because I thought it was better, it was longer, it was not short. Thirteen miles, but it was still longer to get there. My point being, however, he controls the directions and how his website is set up. And when people are clicking on links saying, how do I get there? I click on where I want to go. That's the only one. Make the directions, try to force the scenario, so that when you're doing a Google search, the Google search sends you the right way. It's using AI, all this technology we have, using its word language. Thank you.
Another follow up. Was that a news, um, you? I can't... No? Okay. Come on.
Jeffrey Drall, I just want to clarify something I said, and just also follow up with the resident, McConnell, who said, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, what, what they're doing, let's say you're coming up from, uh, you know, thirty-five, where you come off the New Marden, now you're trying to blow off the red hill. People are trying to eat the light at church, just to give you some clarification, to receive it, or they're angry that you've been hit by it. So as soon as it goes green, they're on. I've been, my wife has been, and my new sixteen-year-old daughter's got a permit, she's not moving the permit, this is, um, sorry. Uh, you'll, you'll have your turn signal on already at the light, but because the trail is such a hidden little street with a weird angle to turn in, we've been almost rear-ended a bunch of times, and it's only going to get worse, as people with their GPS or whatever are leaving the mall. They're being directed that way, and want to get up to Red Hill to hit the parkway or wherever they want to go. And they're just thinking about getting home with their, you know, that, that seat full of bags and goodies. Thank you.
All right. All right. Is there anyone else? Maybe most people have a question. Sorry. Second.
So is that it?
Well, actually, right, you got to go, then you now have to go to, uh, no.
Did you send, did you send the people to pay comments when they weren't supposed to?
Exactly.
It would be helpful if they were prepared to then.
Yes.
All right, so we're going over this to both the comment.
I'm sorry, I'll say, time is...
All right, then, we'll open this, welcome, Cameron, how does your state? Yes.
They're trying to vote this time.
Thank you, everyone, for being here. I know, and following through your comments, appreciate it. But I just wanted to comment, months ago, this board did approve a recommendation for a zone change, so I went back to the township committee, which then changed the zone on the property, most of the people on the board, and I, and we can all see if we live in basis. And I think that zone change has created a lot of problems that we're now dealing with and faced with today. That's my first comment. My second comment is, the developer took a risk, where they went ahead and got their permits from the DOT without your site plan approval. And I'm hoping that the planning board doesn't feel obligated to approve what the DOT has approved. If you're engineer, you're traffic engineer, and amongst yourselves, you feel there's some recommendations that serve the township there, maybe, maybe some things we talked about tonight, do not allow direct access from the shopping center, a lane don't direct it directly to Kings Brooks, which doesn't exist today. And maybe looking at that left-hand turn lane in, which does exist, up and down, we're already by, this year at the Grove, it's on, um, the Route thirty, Route thirty, kind of where Route thirty-six goes across at the Marden Mall, so it does exist, there's a left turn lane there. So if this board thinks those are good ideas, and your traffic engineer thinks they're good ideas, don't feel obligated to run with what the DOT already approved. I know you have a meeting with them, bringing these things up. Those are the two comments. Thank you for your advice. Thank you.
Anyone else? All McConnell?
Yes, sir. Good work.
Matt Moore, seventeen, Tindall Road. Evening, um, I'm probably going to concentrate on the environmental impact statement that was submitted, uh, January two thousand and nineteen by the applicant, previously assessed by confidence, or the engineer's testimony, and was asked to submit specific documentation that was submitted by the applicant during previous testing of this report. I'd like to approach you.
Is this three copies of one document?
No, it's a single document, and the first one includes the most recent environmental impact statement.
Before we conclude much earlier, let me just, for Mr. Pollock, a little short.
Great, I see it. Um, if you don't mind, you'll do all three. There's actually three in there. I see them now. Second is the Phase Two Environmental Report by one of their previous consultants, and you know, this letter by T and M, the township engineer. The ten of the first time. Two thousand and seventeen.
All right, so...
There are three documents, though, and one to close, they're three, clearly three separate documents, so we're going to mark them, go one, two, and three. Well, one being the environmental impact report for the shops in Montana, dated January two thousand and two, two thousand and thirteen, prepared by Otto A. Di Marzio. All right, that's O one. The second document is going to be the Phase Two Environmental Site Investigation Report, um, for July two thousand and fourteen, prepared by Wooder, Wooder, and Curran, uh, and Associates. Wood, not Wood, Wood, Wooder and Curran, that's O two. And O three then is a letter from T and M, dated September one, two thousand and seventeen, uh, consisting of sixty-six pages, addressed to the then secretary of their bureau. These are the only copies, uh, they're up here, and there's been no objection by Mr. Pollock. All right, my concerns are municipal ordinance five forty-six fifteen, which defines what an environmental impact report is, and is required to have in it, deems that this report's deficient, and it shouldn't be approved by this committee. The applicant should be forced to go back, the site's contaminated, they've been home for five years. The Phase Two Site Investigation Report was done, which is provided to you in two thousand and fourteen, it was part of a previous application that came in. T and M has actually issued a number of letters during this application phase, requesting testimony about soil, groundwater conditions, any contamination on the site. None of that has been presented. All of it makes questions regarding delays, can this development go forward as presented? You have leaking underground storage tanks that are adding compliance with the state, have never been registered. You're actually in proximity to the detention base. You can't date detention base and leaking tanks. Historically, by pesticides, the site has not been evaluated for that. There's no way they know whether or not they need to dig up this entire site, down between the three feet. This all goes to the development that they're proposing.
There are three documents, though, that we want to close. There are three, clearly three separate documents, so we're going to mark them, go one, two, and three. Well, one being the environmental impact report from CHOP, one down date of January two thousand and two, two thousand and thirteen, prepared by Otto A. Di Marzio. All right? That's O one. The second document is going to be the Phase Two Environmental Site Investigation Report for July two thousand and fourteen, prepared by Wooder, Wooder, Curran, uh, an associate, not Wooder, Wooder and Curran, that's O two. And O three then is a letter from T and M, dated September one, two thousand and seventeen, consisting of sixty-six pages, addressed to the then secretary of engineering. These are the only copies. They're up here, and there's been no objection by Mr. Paul. All right, my concerns are municipal ordinance five forty-six fifteen, which defines what an environmental impact report is and is required to have in it, deems that this report's deficient, and it shouldn't be approved by this committee. The applicant should be forced to go back, the site's contaminated, they've been home for five years. The Phase Two Site Investigation Report was done, which is provided to you, in two thousand and fourteen. It was part of a previous application that came in. T and M has actually issued a number of letters during this application phase requesting testimony about soil, groundwater conditions, any contamination on the site. None of that has been presented. All of it makes questions regarding delays. Can this development go forward as presented? You have leaking underground storage tanks that are out of compliance with the state have never been registered. You're actually in proximity to the retention basin. You can't dig the retention basin or leak tanks. Historically, by pesticides, the site has not been evaluated for that. There's no way they know whether or not they need to dig up this entire site down between the three feet. This all goes to the development that they're proposing. Again, if you reference the T and M letter that was submitted, they made more recommendations about our compliance. The committee should not vote to advance this application until any environmental requirement to satisfy this party's due diligence. I mean, there's a risk to the public health and safety. They're going to operate this, and nobody knows what the issues are. And you can say it's under DEP's jurisdiction, but it's the town, you said under DEP's jurisdiction, but it's the town's obligation to make sure that environmental impacts report is complete. That report states nothing about environmental quality. In terms of being under DEP, the applicant said that they're going to comply. The site's already out of compliance. They made it publicly known that there's contamination. Nobody's made a move to report any of it. They have obligations regarding baseline ecological. There's a real concern that the town's already waived the woodwork. They can level this entire site before they even look at the ecology out there. Again, even though it is under DEP's jurisdiction for regulatory end, it all goes to quality of life disturbance, there's no way they can tell you guys what timeframes they can meet without having your environmental diligence completed. So for that reason, I'm also hoping you guys aren't voting on this tonight. As you can see, ninety percent of the public's already left. You can be sure that they want public comment on this. They just got timed down on this extended traffic from you. So I'm hoping that you also extend an additional meeting. That's very much it.
Anyone else?
We do appreciate that the town did step up. I know it doesn't mean anything, but we absolutely do. I just wanted to say that comment. It's important to us. We felt the original study wasn't conclusive of all the information, and we do appreciate that you did look into it, and you did make the effort. I just wanted to say that effort. It is important, and we appreciate that. One of my comments that I would like to make at the end here is, Adam mentioned that there should be possibly a follow-up study. And I think it's really important that the township, not just the developer, do the follow-up study, and, you know, not just timing and phasing for some of the intersections we considered, possibly some Plan Bs that the public has discussed this evening. I know some of the Plan Bs of a second jug handle are expensive and difficult, and left turn lanes are not the norm, but if we get to a point where things aren't working, I think it's important that some of these things are in the background and are considered, and that possibly you should have a meeting where the public could attend, and we can discuss it. I don't know if that's something to have these at a planning board meeting or township committee meeting, but I'm sure if everything works smoothly, you know, that we'd be thrilled, and if it doesn't, we would like to come back to a meeting a certain time after the mall is built and everything is built and settled, so we can discuss the issues, and we really hope that the town would work with us in figuring out a plan to fix whatever problems there are. I think it's very important to not just let whatever happens here tonight be the end, and that if there are issues that we can come back and have a dialogue to discuss it. And we would like to have some of our and after counts for some of these areas that are off Kings Highway. I'm requesting it, I'm hoping somebody will look into it, it's important. We really don't know exactly, like we talked about some of these areas of these roads. It would be great if you do have the counts terrific, because we would like to analyze at that point later on if the traffic becomes an issue. That's all we're saying. Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any votes?
I have a question. From our planner, Mr. Maro is quite adept. He is on the Environmental Commission, and I would like to hear our planner, our researcher from our planner, about the, about the areas.
It was an environment review, actually, I think, but all I could say that it is really under the purview of DEP. And what we do with any kind of application like this, our conditions are that we get all these outside agencies, D and P approval, and once we're okay, that's only when we release the plan. So to answer your question, will this, will they just go, for lack of other words, start free and only the, or is it required approval or order decision made? That's not true. At the end of the mission of balance stage, we really expect them to provide us some other information.
Does T and M concur with that?
DEP requires that underground storage tanks are removed in a certain way, there are certain requirements for removal of underground storage tanks. So, I mean, they're not just going out there and removing them willingly, there's specific requirements under the DEP that requires them to remove them. Removal adoration of the.
No, that shouldn't necessarily, yes, no.
I'd like to rebut that.
Can I approach?
Yes, I'm closing, it's pulling up.
Mr. Maro, would you sign up if you're backing up?
Sure. Again, I've got over twenty years of experience as a consultant, currently state licensed as a LSRT, licensed site remediation professional, also licensed from your house, over tax and general things. My concerns go to the ability for the project timeframes to be laid out. Up and down the state, any developer does their due diligence before providing a site plan approval. If they want to test this site, and just one issue, store pesticide use. If the pesticide is an initial problem, they're back before you guys would remit it, because their choices are either dig it all out, or plant it all up, and there's no way to tell if that's a six-inch issue or three-foot issue. So it's a matter of due diligence and planning. Instead of drawing this thing out for more and more appearances before you, as far as the underground storage tanks go, they're already out of compliance. They're leaking, they're gasolineing, which means they're regulated. So any claims that they'll comply, the owners of the property have already been out of compliance for five years. They'll have to answer to the state for that, as far, you know, in terms of old fines and registrations. But in good faith, the site's already, it hasn't been environmentally evaluated. The environmental impact report is deficient. You guys have a say, whether it's approved or denied, as part of a final report. It's in the ordinance, until all the environmental quality is assessed. It should be able to leave, or it won't. And it's not just the soil and groundwater quality. Now, back up here, noise issues, none of that is addressed in the environmental impact statement. There's nothing in it. It's just written up, gray in general, nothing will have an impact, nothing will have an impact. The traffic discussion alone tonight was enough to tell you that there's going to be noise impacts, that have not been at report, they're not looked at, they're not identified, and it's part of the ordinance. I mean, as far as my experience goes, as far as you speak about it, I can't tell you how many dozens or couple hundred municipalities I've been from, I've done this dance a number of times. As far as developers go, the due diligence is important because you don't want them coming back in front of you over and over again. Again, the tanks, the retention basin three, they're really hot. That's a delay. You know, when and if they start the, you know, the remediation of those tanks, if they require groundwater investigation for, you're talking about multiple wells, delays. Each of the components require ecological evaluation. The site is heavily vegetated, anything is possible. If you clear it before you do those evaluations, which right now you're allowed to do with woodwork, it's waiting, you know, all these are consensual, guys. They've had five years to comply, and look at that. And most developers, I can't imagine in this case why due diligence wasn't completed in the time they had. I mean, they've got hundreds of thousands of dollars in this project. Wouldn't you want to know if you're looking at a six- or seven-figure number, still ahead for remediation?
That's not the board's, that's not the board's concerns, respectfully. I know your LSRT has been there for twenty years.
Let's throw it up here.
It's just not the board's purview, it's DEP's view.
They sell the same public health.
The due diligence is our problem. If we miss something, that's on us, that's not the board.
You guys telling board timeframes and promising a project that's done in a timely manner.
We are.
It's a point. How long's the project going to take?
We're going to stand by.
How long's it going to take?
It's not the board.
Board doesn't need to know how long the project's going to take.
Mr. Chairman, it's very clear, you know, the jurisdiction, and the board's professionals clearly have a role in evaluating it, so I'm not minimizing that.
How about the nutrition, is there any statute? Hold it, hold it, get it, tell it.
There are various statutes involved, so we are in compliance, we will be in compliance, and we'll be conditioned to any resolution or approval that says we have to be in compliance, as your planner was aware of. It's standard not only here in this, in this town, all across the state, it's not something you can.
How about the nutrition environmental impact report?
I just, I stated the obvious, so, Mr. Chairman, respectfully, this is, that was needed at this point.
How many of the tanks are we being?
In Phase Two document, I divided it, data is in there, they already evaluated those. They conducted soil borers and testing around those tanks, showed that there's contamination at the time, T and M reviewed that Phase Two report, made recommendations that additional investigations needed, that they were out of compliance. Nobody's made a move on any of it yet. The tanks are wired to be registered. The spill incident should have been called in once this was made public. There's a due diligence allowance, but once that report came into the public domain and it was, we were able to FOIA it, there was an obligation to report.
Can you clarify why you believe the environmental report is deficient?
Environmental report is deficient because it states the applicant is required to give all adverse soil, groundwater, any type of conditions that may affect the property and ability to develop. It's so that you guys have the ability to know what's going on environmentally with the property. The fact that they didn't mention any of that, and that as part of this application didn't include any environmental documentation, which they did twice before, they did submit those reports previously. T and M did ask for an update on that in their most, in their previous letters, their March letter and their May letter, and it was continually called.
There is an LSRT that governs the site, there's an LSRT that doesn't retain it, and there's not a violation. There's not a notice of violation pending.
There can only be an LSRT retaining, there's no spill incident number. One has been called in.
Are you aware of this LSRT pending?
That's pending.
Are you, are you aware of that? Were you aware of this one now, about change of view?
As far as, well, that's pretty basic, that's the LSRT. As far as the planning board's consideration, it does. As far as the planning board's consideration, it does, because whether or not LSRT is engaged doesn't let them know what's going to happen with the property. Is all the design that you guys put together, is it easy? Or are you going to have to move retention basin? Or are you going to have severe delay because you have to store pesticides across the entire site? It's not just you, Toll Road is going to be up against the same thing. They've already got a project that's sowed river, they're digging down the three feet. It's just a concern that's being bypassed that the municipality should consider.
Mr. Maro, do you have a, a opinion on this allegation that the environmental report pushed?
I have no idea. Number one, I don't have it, I'm a three, I don't have a few, there's a lot of cases that we're covering, we do, and we are going. We do ask for it, it's part of the ordinance, and I think ordinance. The only thing that's said was, the only real jurisdiction you have is, does it impact your site? Could it? I don't have the two thousand and fourteen T and M letter in front of me right now, there's sixty something pages.
But there's a question.
Well, the only, the only jurisdiction the board has is whether or not the environmental concerns might impact the site. That's it. And if you, if you prove it saying so did the DEP, the gentleman's correct, they have to make changes, it has to come back. So the basin has to go from here to there because of oil contamination, pesticide contamination, then they have to go back there, say, we have to rearrange, the pieces around, we can't put the basin where we want it to, it has to go up here, so that, that would be a issue. And I'm speaking to the impact report. They modify the report, have the report state what the conditions are on the site, like it's supposed to, not raise over the site and say, hey, everything's fine, board ignores the conditions that are on the project. That's the purpose of the environmental impact report, it's so that the board gets a red flag to say, hey, we may want to consider what's going on with this project, or their timeframe concerns, or their concerns about changes in what's going to happen after.
So let me boil this down a little bit, a quick bit, based on what Mr. Maro can say. So what you're saying is the absence of that report does not give the board an opportunity to evaluate what about this impacts the cycle?
Sure. It wasn't even submitted. We're here to now.
Let's, let's make that clear, because I'm certainly trying to pay attention, and I'm not getting.
Number one, the prior application was made under the dead existing ordinance. The current application is made under the current ordinance. If the prior ordinance required the submission of the project on impact statement, they did it. I'm not sure whether or not the development planning requires it or not. Is it required? I don't know, I have no idea. So if they're not required, could they not report?
I'm sorry, I think what we're saying is that, are you saying that it's not their own fault, or that it's the official's?
It's, the environmental impact report makes no mention of any evaluation of the property. Is there, is there environmental impact reports submitted for this application?
Yes.
Jack, where are you, two thousand and nineteen, which one copy? Two thousand and nineteen, right? So we have them, so it was required, you have to develop. We have. Was it we did?
Yes.
And so T and M reviewed it as part of this pending application?
And we didn't do that.
Well, D complete those, you know.
No, they, I mean, they filed. But we didn't file the patient's application.
So it was submitted, it was reviewed.
Yes.
Does the current T and M report say, did it have, does it say that they should be done? Frankly, I don't know. Read the March, March two thousand and nineteen, and May two thousand and nineteen letters, both of them make statements that they're waiting for testimony regarding the environmental quality of the site, and it's listed as being continually called. The testimonies that were provided. I brought it up when I engineered it. Right, the board asked for those reports, and we provided those. You started from there.
Let me start now, let's have this project, sorry. And we submitted those, those documents to that hearing, after you testified.
This, did this go, how much for engineering, for planning, or environmental testimony? I'm one of those. So if you're asking me, does the board have the right to review it? Yes. Did they submit it? Apparently they did. Did the technical people reviewing on behalf of the planning board think it was sufficient? I don't know. I'm opening up the T and M letter.
I don't know. I'm opening up the TNM letters, see if I can figure out where the comments are. This would be a long objection in reference, I haven't.
You could have.
Just read a letter, we're talking about the safety thing.
Did you refer to the next board's page eight letter? March 14 letter.
Well, we're sure it might actually be named.
March 14 is on page 19. Name letter, they again requested it. Page 22, page number five.
I talked about the... And, and USP.
Yes, I believe testimony was provided, I haven't researched.
They didn't. Why? Seven years ago. He testified?
Person that developed the report.
Yeah, Mr. Hunter, Richard Hunter testified in that meeting. I thought he testified as an archaeologist.
So did I.
I mean, that's mine, so I'm not, I'm not trying to...
I do not recall an environmental component is...
I mean, testimony.
I thought he was...
I'm not trying to...
It was.
He was test, he testified as an archaeologist. They compare that to... They compare it to more than his total blame. Is he part of that organization? Well, we have to be on the right. The environmental impact report, that's 2014, there's another one that you could... That was, the open one, environmental impact report was prepared by that gentleman, Don Di Marzio. That was it. So I'm not sure. My notes reflected that gentleman that we just talked about, Mr. Hunter, who's qualified as an archaeologist and brought it out. I don't know, those were testimony about the climate.
Mr. Gordon, after that meeting, you asked, board asked for documentations of the environmental condition. We submitted them and provided those to the summit. So in response to TNM's request, we complied with his request and continued comment, quote unquote. And to our knowledge, TNM is satisfied with the submission and satisfied with that comment. We also know if there's a notion of rejection, the jurisdiction. That's, that's how we handled it, and to our knowledge, our understanding, TNM was satisfied with that submission in response to...
We're just hoping that Rob's not here.
Yeah, but so I think Rob's a little bit of a clarifier that, but the continuing comment was satisfied based on the testimony and also our submission of documents that you requested.
Is there a record?
Is that, is that yours, Ken?
That's my understanding, but Rob...
Fair enough.
So here, I think TNM is satisfied, and if that's their statement on the record, but this has like, there's no comments from plenty of engineering.
There's no comments on the environmental. I'm not here to argue.
Is there any more, is there any more sponsorship rate?
Look, I look approximately at this site. I see this all the time. I have a general concern about what might be there, how it impacts me, the neighbors, the weapons, and anywhere else that's going off. Because it's all a factor. I'm just looking for correspondence on whether or not, how they comply. Because they didn't collect anything, they didn't do any additional sampling. If they did anything, they just said they would do additional work. The TNM issued a letter stating what their review opinion was. I also don't see if they did document review.
We deserve a letter generated.
So if it wasn't a letter generated on that. And no testimony.
I'd hate to say, there's just a question about, now, in front of the court, if we go with this, and I mean, it's, I'd hate to see a question about our decision. Isn't that something everyone on this court should realize?
Uh, Mr. Rajan.
Yes?
I just regret to hear, uh, a direction we've been given. That if in the recording you walked in, we, we told, we told the office of heat gain, once, if you do the decision, they have to converse reservation compliance. At that time, Rob, after the night office, go through eight labs to see whether they're compliant. It's not that, you know, you want a decision, whatever decision it is, it's all over. So I just feel like, so I understand the concerns, Mr. Rajan, you know, but it's not that it's, we don't review it or it's gone and it's forgotten about.
Senator, can I clarify that for you, just in terms of, if the nightmare scenario that the president is laying out is not your part, there's other storage tanks, and we have ways of, that they will be... Is there, based on our process, is there a risk or is there a loophole, or is there a pathway for DEP to not catch that? Or, or are you saying that if this were to proceed, it has to, there's a date that they need to leave? If they wouldn't catch all that, and then these guys are screwed for having missed it, right?
Correct. So, so just, and it happens all the time. I, you know, my past site as a consultant, I've seen it numerous times, and I think this Rajan also agreed to that. What happens is, suppose that there is, so, never mind, I mean, I'm sorry, sorry, that one. They don't, they have to be, they just, they just, a certain process, right? Um, what, suppose if there's an issue, for example, you know, let's say, they need to redesign something. They'll have to come back to do that. So it's not that, you know, say, oh, the water company, um, we don't care whether the DTS down, or whatever, it's not like that, you know? That's what I'm trying to be.
And that, and that goes to our concerns. It's not that they're going to bypass or miss something. It's that we're all timed out on this issue. To do diligence, which could have been done, provided and overlooked. Now, if it goes the wrong way, we're all back here again. And the public's sitting here, you guys are sitting here, every developer's sitting here. My question just goes to, can you guys approve the environmental impact study? That doesn't have that information in.
But in effect, we're not approving the environmental impact study. Making a decision of facts as simple as that. What we're counting on is that if there's something critically wrong with this site, the DEP will force them back here. The fact that they'll be back here for the fifth or sixth year isn't the board's concern. We just have to be sure that if something is wrong, there's a mechanism to get it.
That's, that's only if the design changes and we have to come back here. There's contamination, he's going to make us clean it up. And there are myriad statutes that would require that, as you will have.
Sure. If you can, if you can indicate the whole thing, if the decision discussion, not move basin number three.
Then they don't go back there.
Then you don't go back to the private estate.
It's, it's just in my opinion, it's every time money's spent. If everybody knows.
I think that's hard to argue with, but I think that's where you're describing a twist to the...
I understand. I understand, it's, you know, it's an open issue, you know, and the board in the future should consider it. When they add developers before it, it will speed up the process. You know, due diligence is something that everybody does. You guys have an environmental impact report from the county that requires all this reporting, it should appear in there. That way, you guys are as educated as everybody else about what might be the concerns. In this case, it was totally vested. That's why I brought it up.
Mr. Chairman, just want to add, just to the board's information. We work with, and I've worked on hundreds of development applications on behalf of private developers. Uh, the majority of those developers, vast majority of those developers, go in for site plan approval before any environmental improvement, cleanup is ever completed. In, I would say, a good percentage of those, uh, the environmental impact analysis hasn't even been done. So, and, and in the same percentage, a number of those developers don't even own the land, they simply are under contract. So they go get site plan approval, they spend the, the money to understand what they can build before they go and spend hundreds of, if not millions of dollars on what environmental factor cleanup would be required. So I just want the board to understand that it is commonplace for a private developer to seek a site plan approval through a planning board prior to any, uh, any cleanup or any environmental. Just wanted the board to understand.
And just as common for them to completely due diligence investigation. It's developers who develop.
That's for sure.
I would not agree with that statement.
I want you to do so.
Do you agree disagree? Is there any other person that has a...
I completely agree with that gentleman, that this board requires an environment, environmental impact study. And it was reviewed, and there are remaining outstanding questions from your reviewers. So why wouldn't you want those questions answered before you vote? And I'm, I'm not certain if this developer owns the property or is either contract to purchase it. Certainly these, I mean, anyone that buys. So they're not going to close on the property until they have an environmental impact study done and they know how much they have to spend. They're not going to close without knowing how much they have to spend on cleanup. And so I, I don't see why you're not requiring them to answer the outstanding questions that your reviewers have outlined for you with the, with respect to the environmental impact study before you vote. You have arranged to that.
The board is at no risk here. Nor is the town, as I understand it, the, the walls are...
But if, I understand in that grace, there are expenses. But if you have engineers who have reviewed or explored that you require, and those reviewing engineers have questions, why wouldn't you ask them to...
We don't have questions.
TNM?
Each team.
TNM. How do I miss what you were saying? I mean, they have outstanding questions in letters, but...
Did there were any questions that how we can provide additional documents in case of those questions?
Well, we haven't seen, I mean, that should be public information. I think this gentleman is still on top of it. He could have seen those answers too, isn't he?
No, no, the reason it says continuing comment in our letter is because the, the board has not concluded the process of reviewing the application, it's not been voted on. So we just write continuing, continuing comment in our letter in case additional does not require. So it's not that it's, it's addressed, it's not, you know, it's just that, you know, the comment is still there, and it's not going away.
But the environmental impact study could show results from the environmental review.
Still under the review of the...
Oh, it just sounds like some, it, it doesn't make sense. It really doesn't.
Mark W., I'm also the head of the environmental commission. I'd like to formally request that you send me a copy of the information on the, uh, what the TNM got and what their result was. We'll have to review these things. You know, environmental commission, that's all, and I haven't, you know, I've had a lot of problems getting some of the documents, so...
I'm understanding, understanding that you've got everything, raised that issue last meeting, since then you got...
I've gotten things, but this sounds like much more recent. This was TNM's response to the concerns. I haven't seen that.
It's a comment that's been in our letter since we, the first time we issued the letter on the new application. It hasn't changed, but we just wrote continuing comment on that because the hearing process isn't over.
And we will be the next thing. So, you know, um, so do you like, do you have ideas, you know, talk to my office and call the team to you, and I'd send you, I'd ask the applicant's engineer to post it on that, you know, site like 10 times, but he wouldn't get it. So that I would have on that, that you could send please to their manager.
Is there a reason?
I'll take that.
Or anyone else? Anybody else? We close the public portion?
Mr. Chairman, I think I might have set that up.
Say.
We didn't close the public hearing. All the favor? The board can deliberate, the board can make decisions. All the areas closed, every model. We have nine people, all who are here tonight and listen to the recordings of the prior meetings, if they weren't here for prior meetings. If that's the case, then everyone here can participate in this group. Because we have to talk about that end goal. We have this board that says, this, we've seen everything ourselves, the dough, the years, the need. In my opinion, if we don't make a job now, it's not getting done. So, I was saying, any motion you have, the motion has to include improvements in the road.
There's, we're, so the board has to look at fundamental decision here about. If you're going to vote to say that this applicant wants to do this, they have a DOT approval ready in hand, and he says they don't. So that probably suggests that that's probably not a proper... It's not going to, it's not going to succeed ultimately if it was challenged. So if the motion was that the township is going to apply a DOT, and if DOT then were to approve the Timber Road intersection improvements, then the developer would be funding that. And then the, the next issue is, I ask whether or not the...
And then the, the next issue is, I ask whether or not the property owner, Mountain Hill, would, uh, basically dedicate a portion of that new house lot to the audience as part of approval and the response track would, at least, no, no from the contractor. No from the app.
But I, I remember you just said you put up with it.
We do not have that authority, right?
Right, I agree with you.
And as your expressions of the funding, as you, Mr. Morgan was saying, that the funding of the development will be through redevelopment process. It will be additional funds through the redevelopment agreement.
So if the motion were that it's not contingent upon D O T approval, township going to go with D O T. If D O T approves it, then it will be funded through the redevelopment process. And then I read up the board as to whether or not we want to deal with the, the house, the blue house and the acquisition of that part. I mean, it's not onsite because it's not part of this application, it's just owned by the same people who own the application, of course, the property that's before you. Adjacent to it.
Mr. Morgan, just clarification, we wouldn't have to, in that scenario, wait for, for D O T to approve it. We could proceed at over risk, and if down the road, if the D O T were to approve the township's request, then those later modifications would be accelerated. But we would not, we would be conditioned to this current application, I'm just clarifying, that D O T approve the improvements that Mr. Catherine offered this evening.
I understand. I understand the concern, yes, that would be fair. Let me ask you a question, I'll follow up on that. What, what happens if the D O T process takes really long? And you're done with construction, you're all going to perform this model, and you're gone, and D O T says, okay. So where's, where's that, how does the town then get the funds?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, so, so I understand it's always going to be through the R D A. Is your question maybe too late because the funding has already been extended? I'm not sure maybe I should...
Is there, it's not a serious, is there redevelopment agreement, redevelopment agreement executed on this property now?
It's been approved.
Yes, okay, it's my excuse.
It's approved?
Yes. It's approved.
It's a document.
It's a document.
The board, then, then the answer is yes.
I agree, yes.
Um, is there, but then, the funding process involves a few more steps. The funding comes from...
It comes through, right, it comes through the R A B, or it comes, comes through the funding money. And, uh, the R A B is so specific that if it comes through the R A B, it is going to be, um, only for, the R A B is very specific. So through the R A B, you can find specific projects, you can find construction roles, so this will fall into that category. So, um, it, uh, you know, so, yeah, coming from, uh, coming through the, through that.
Do you have a redevelopment area bond without a type?
I, I do this on this, I do the filing process, I don't...
Yeah, we will have a...
By, by the, uh, by the R A B. Uh, by the R A B.
Okay, I'm not exactly sure of the logistics of this, I'll have to work on that a little bit, but if the approval was that the developer's funding is through the redevelopment process, it's not, you're not waiting for D O T's approval to take sort of construction. And the only issue then is, I'd ask the board, you know, make your own judgment as to whether or not there are required dedication of the lot with the, you know, it's required, that lots required for the extension of the asset.
Yeah, we don't, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, we just don't control that property. The acting does not control that property.
No, I understand that.
That's just what we're having.
Yes, we understand that, the acting certainly has.
Sure. You know what I'm asking, yes?
Could that be a condition?
A, a happy condition or can we, or we have a... I, I think because the situation at the same order of property, the subject property approved board, Mountain Hill also owns this lot, that's a pretty close nexus. I, I don't see it being a problem. I'm not sure that, no, it seems the same way, but you'll find out.
This has been going on for years, and I think when we get along, I'll make a motion that we, that we, uh, accept this with the, with the province that, uh, that, uh, Mountain Hill does, uh, consider, uh, the purchase of that house.
So, you, Mountain Hill would be required, let's move through this.
Uh, yeah.
The township is going to, and go to D O T, that's not their part. If D O T approves the improvements at Tyndale and Kings High, that developers are going to fund those improvements through the redevelopment process.
And that Mountain Hill will be required to dedicate sufficient land to allow that ramp to be built on. I agree with your, with your recommendations.
Do you think the board did that last part?
I think you go, you know, quite frankly, because in the...
I, I know that it is...
Mr. Morgan, that, that area is outside of the area of redevelopment, I believe. That area of question, I'm just raising it, not pointing out, that the area of question is not in the area of redevelopment. So what I could do, I do question, the board might, how, how to do that?
I mean, we, we looked it up the other day, so $200,000 says priority.
You have every exception.
No, I'm not, I'm not, I mean, you know, the goofy thing about it is if you don't do it that way, then you're going to wind up that the money is going to come from this developer back to and pay for the acquisition of Mountain Hill's property. So in essence, you know, they're going to wind up paying money, winds up the township's coffers, the check clears, and it goes back out to acquire Mountain Hill's property. To me, that seems a little goofy, but, you know, but I'll leave you, but, yeah. And I realize Mountain Hill's not here, but...
Well, I'm just saying for the good of the township, what we want to do with this, with the traffic situation, and we want to get at least somewhat of a, a, a clearing.
If somebody came in here and said, I want to develop this property, but I don't want to develop the property next to it, and the board said, gee, we think that the roadway improvements have to, have to deal with both of these lots, that's a reasonable condition. And that's what you have to do, just on a larger scale. Well, I think that I got. Do I have a case to cite to that? No. You have eyes on the V M L, we will, no. Common sense, forty years ago, this is...
Well, I've made a motion, if somebody wants to make a second motion.
I'll second you.
Let me clarify that motion.
Let's, yeah.
Reboot it, make sure we call.
Let, let our console reboot it.
I'm going to try again. So, the township would be going to D O T for seeking permit for the improvements at Tyndale and Kings High as shown in Mr. Catherine's report. If the D O T approves that, then the impact, the design, acquisition, and construction cost would be funded through the redevelopment process. And then the third part would be that if that file through design requires acquisition of some of the blue house lot, that Mountain Hill would require the... I mean, there's four or five minutes of hearings, and now, I believe, there's other little things going back and looking through the minutes. I noticed there are a couple of things we have to put in here, I know the problem, like, you want to do a skateboarding slide. There's, there's, there are things like that that have to go into this resolution.
So from what respect, regardless of what, as you just told me, the only way we, so the town loses out is if the D O T says no.
Well, they preempt you, I mean, if they're right.
No, 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 what I mean is, if they say no, we can inherit the decision.
We look at this time, that is the reason why we have been preempted and going and visiting them, we are advocating for this. Just want you to make a vote of that.
No, I understand that.
And I don't believe that they would just say no, but we go with these suggestions, and we're not just going there with...
We're, the town is an apple, it's a cake, so we want this, well, because if D O T has to work, you can get something that everybody's willing to agree.
It was seen as right.
I would say it's unlikely that they're going to totally say no, they might reserve things change, but for them to say...
The good news to the D O T is, they don't have to pay for it. And it's just probably the biggest part to be arguing.
Correct.
R slash Jim should pay a motion.
I'm sorry.
Go, Paul.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Mrs. Self?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Bellinger?
Yes.
Mr. Marseys?
Yes.
Mr. Versi?
Yes.
Mr. Zickley?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thanks to the board, thank you to the professionals.